Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one Mayor Commission Work Session. First item on the agenda is Commission Onboarding, which will be conducted by the City Attorney and the City Administrator. So I'll leave it to the two of you as to how you're gonna roll this out.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our annual onboarding training starting this year. To present to-
The first, the first, yes.
To present today, it will be myself, Faye Johnson, City Administrator. I have also Zoe Penarites, who will go over some bargaining impasse provisions, and Chief Matty. They have a, an engagement at ten o'clock, so I'm gonna let them kick it off for us. And we will start with Chief Matty. Right before we do, all quickly, she's gonna review urgency management operations. Collective bargaining, we're gonna go over later today. The history of West Palm Beach, the form of government and powers between the Commission and the Mayor. We're also gonna review the procurement process, quasi judicial actions, budget process, the agenda process, and have a discussion about community and neighborhood meetings going forward.
Before Chief Matty begins, as the City Attorney mentioned, this is our first annual onboarding session. And I was on the Commission for eight years, and we never had one of these. And I just thought it would be a good idea for everyone to kinda get a level set on city, city operations, answer any questions you may have, obviously in a public forum. And, you know, some new commissioners, a new Commissioner is on board. But it's an opportunity, I think, for all of us to have a conversation about city and city operations and address any concerns you may have. So here we are.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor. So my name is Diana Matty. I'm your Fire Chief. It's nice to meet you. And so, emergency operations, the Emergency Operations Center falls underneath the Fire Department, as most of you know. We, we, the Fire Department covers medical emergencies, vehicle accidents, fires, hazmads, a variety of other community education outreach. But when any of these natural or man-made disasters, like the pandemic over the last year, gets beyond what we can handle just at the Fire Department or just at the Police Department, we expand out into the emergency management field, and that's where the E O C comes in. And that's a picture of our E O C there. It's on the second floor of Fire Station Number Five, out on Congress Avenue. So these are the different levels that the E O C works on, so levels one through four. And we've been at Level Two Partial Activation for the past, really, the, over the past fifteen months since COVID really started. For a while, we were up a little higher in the, in the, um, in the Level One, when we had all of the city staff out there. We were having meetings. We were doing Zoom meetings all the time. So we've been running at a little bit lower of a level. So ordinarily, on a blue-sky day, when we don't have a pandemic, when we don't have hurricanes or anything like that going on, we're at Level Four, and we've got a bare-bones staff out there. But, you know, as we've continued through this pandemic, we've increased the staff on a daily level to help our Assistant Chief Bloomfield out there with, with the operations. So what is your role in a disaster? Many of you have already been out there for your tour, your one-on-one. You've been through the pandemic. You've been through hurricanes with us. You know, the number one thing is, are you personally ready? Because you're not able to, just like us, just like the firefighters, police officers, our city staff, we're not able to serve our public if we're not ready. That means for hurricanes or for any other, um, you know, storms that we may have, long-term power outages, anything like that. So you need to make sure that you're personally ready. That means all the hurricane supplies that we see on TV, making sure that you have it all. Because we need you to be out there in your district, staying in your district, working with your constituents, and staying informed of everything that's going on in your, in your neighborhood, and not only that, in the city. So we're gonna be, let's say during a hurricane, if we, we don't get one this summer, but if we do, or if we're in the, uh, the cone for one, we're gonna be putting out a lot of information, and we need you to then turn around and put it out, because you're gonna have a lot of followers on your social media. So we'll use you, just like our P I, our P I O puts out information. We need you to do the same for your constituents. And we're gonna, we're gonna get information from the county E O C, who gets it from the state E O C. And as that stuff comes down, you'll get it, you'll get it briefed to you through, in the past, we've, we've, um, when it hasn't been such an extreme storm, the City Administrator has been the one to disseminate that information. If we have something at an elevated, heightened emergency, where, you know, we're like, where we were with Hurricane Dorian, where it was real close, we might just have a designated liaison that's only for Commission information. So these are some of the things that are currently going on as far as the, the emergency management side of it. Obviously, our COVID nineteen response, we've got the vaccination site still up and running where we're doing that. We've, we're supporting the test site out at the ballpark of the Palm Beaches. We are beginning a community paramedic program, which we've been able to get some supplies and equipment through HUD funds. We are, what's today's date, twenty days away from hurricane season, so I hope everyone is ready for that. And so we're ramping up our training. We've got a, a drill coming up where Public Works is going to do a debris management drill. Uh, the signs are up off of, uh, Ponce, for Ponce de Leon, the signs are on Flagler. So you might start getting some, uh, questions about that drill. And our, we have ongoing training of, for all of our staff on FEMA classes. So that's how to manage them, how to deal with the debris management, all the different nuances based on what people's positions are within the organizational structure. And we are always seeking grant funding to help build the resilience of our city. So in the coming, especially for the new Commissioner, we'll get you on the schedule with Assistant Chief Bloomfield, get a personal tour out at the E O C. Um, we will also email you some links to these classes that FEMA recommends that, that you take. And then we are currently in the process, we had a workshop last week to rev, or build the continuity of operations plan, and then also the comprehensive emergency management plan. So those are two plans that we're massaging right now to get out new versions of. So when those come out, we'll make sure that you all have copies of those. And, and we will definitely be doing some kind of presentation, I'm sure, at a workshop for those. But I'll, I'll take any questions that anyone may have.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I just wanted to jump in and say I would love to also be on the one-on-one tour. If, I don't know if together or separate, but I haven't been on one also.
Absolutely. I will.
Thank you for including me.
If anyone wants to revisit or to have a one-on-one, for sure, absolutely.
Any other questions for Chief? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much. I know on one of the previous slides, the bullet point about relaying information to and from Commissioner districts. I think that, you know, in, when I first started, you know, I really didn't know what my role was during a hurricane. And it was really helpful, I think, in the two thousand and nineteen hurricane season, just some more descriptive procedures were put in place about what the Commissioners could do, how we could relay information, and it, it seemed to be very effective. And I was able to relay where trees were down, where residents were seeing flooding or issues. So I just wanted to say thank you so much, because it's very helpful when our residents are calling. And, you know, they don't know who to call or where to go, and so they're, they're reaching out to us. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Matty, for your presentation. And thank you to all of the men and women in uniform that have really helped out. And I think our last year has really demonstrated, typically when we think of the fire service, a lot of people only think about fires. And I know our West Palm Beach Fire Department handles so much more, dive teams, extraction teams. Just, I couldn't even name them all if I sat up here. But I think sometimes the same thing happens when it comes to emergency management. We typically think of hurricanes here in South Florida. This past year has taught us to think about COVID and, and the kind of things that you all have just amazingly stepped up to the plate to run sites and, and go out. Even now, I know, getting the vaccination program with the Community Medic Program and starting to get that, um, visiting homebound seniors program underway. So can you also talk about, um, your role? Because I think the public tends to forget about the kinds of emergency management that you were prepared for, that you liaise with, um, the Police Department on things like Sunfest and being prepared if there were some kind of, you know, disturbance at a, at a special event, or if there were any kind of other emergency throughout the city. Um, you know, God forbid we have any kind of active shooter or anything like that. Can you talk about the kinds of, of plans and preparations that you do for any kind of, um, other emergency management like that?
Sure. We, thank you for that. We have, um, one of the Assistant Police Chiefs works out at the E O C as well, Chief Mooney. So what we do in advance of something like Sunfest is there are very numerous meetings, but there's security plans, there's COVID safety plans, there's all kinds of, uh, acts. We look at the access to the site. Can we get in there with fire trucks? Can the police officers get in there if we were to have something, uh, like an, an active shooter or something like that? We have, uh, through grant funds, been able to get what's called an M C I truck, a Mass Casualty Incident Truck, where we have adequate supplies to deal with something, um, to the degree of the Las Vegas shooting, where you had hundreds of people with some kind of injury. We now can take, we have these little bags that are little trauma bags that we can turn civilians into rescuers. Where here, take these tourniquets, take these bandages, and go apply pressure to someone's wound somewhere. So we work together very closely with the Police Department on our active shooter training. Uh, the Fire Department now has, um, bulletproof vests and, and, um, and helmets, uh, so that we can, you know, we're more better prepared these days as compared to where we were even three years ago. So, um, in addition to that, you know, for any, any event that we have in the city that is gonna have any kind of crowd, even not to the degree of Sunfest, we have, uh, special event meetings where, um, we have Parks and Rec, and we have, um, city engineering, so that we can not only have event safety at the actual event site when people are leaving town, so that we can get all the vehicles out. You know, they, they plan traffic, movement of traffic, out of the downtown, so that, so that that can get cleared out. And we're hopeful that we get those events back sooner than later. So, um, I don't know if that, that covers everything, but if there's anything I missed?
I mean, I'm sure there's that and so much more. Thank you for that answer. Uh, you know, I think it's just a, a very good thing for the public to know the kinds of proactive planning that, under Mayor's leadership and your leadership, Chief Matty, that we are prepared as a city, as much as we can be, uh, for the unknowns that, that may happen. So thank you to you and, and everyone who serves the city for being ready to be there for our safety. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I think it's, I think it's also important to point out that, that no matter how prepared we are, if the individual at home is prepared, e- even a little bit. I mean, as we learned through this pandemic, who knew that we would need a little bit of extra toilet paper and, and that every, you know, piece of meat and, and all of the, the food supplies would be gone off the shelves because of, of a biological? So, um, you know, a little bit of preparedness by each and every one of us is gonna make it a safer community for all of us.
Uh, Chief, talk to us a little bit about the Community Paramedic Program. That's something I'm not familiar with.
So it's an emerging program that we've been kind of in the, um, the formative stages of for a couple of years now, trying to figure it out. There's, there's departments all around the country that have started to do it. And there's different models. There's, um, there's models where it's paramedics. There's models where it's a police and a firefighter. And then there's models where there's a firefighter medic and they, and they, um, a clinician from somewhere. So what, what we're, what we're trying to do is get our foundation, where we have the, the vehicle, we have the medical equipment, our defibrillator, which in itself is just, for one defibrillator, is thirty-five thousand dollars. So there's a lot of foundational stuff that has to go along with it. But then getting out in the community and even just making a change for one individual, connecting them with services, stopping the high utilization of our emergency services, not only for us but for the hospitals. So some, some departments are embedded with a hospital system where that's where the clinician comes from. So we're, we're, we're working through it, and it's emerging. So, you know, I hope to have more to tell you in the coming months and, and year. But it's definitely something we're excited about, to try to reduce those high utilizers.
Very good. Any other questions for Chief Matty? Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Great, Chief. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Zoe Penarites. I'm a Senior Assistant City Attorney with the city. Been here for thirteen years and a few collective bargaining contracts. Um, and I'm here to talk about that with you. The contracts are three years long, so I, I was trying to remember who was around at what juncture. But every time we have to renegotiate a contract, it always seems like a big deal. Some years are easier than others, but here we are. Let me just give you some basics for those of you who may not be as familiar with collective bargaining as others. So we have five collective bargaining agreements. That doesn't mean we have five unions. We actually only have four unions right now. We have two contracts with, rather, we have two bargaining units. One bargaining unit is the Battalion Chief Unit, and one is the Rank and File Unit in the firefighter's realm. Um, they are represented by Local seven twenty-seven of the I F F. And rank Battalion Chiefs are obviously the Battalion Chiefs. The rank and file include your basic firefighter, the driver engineers, the operations captains, and the lieutenants. I don't wanna speak more than I have before me. Um, the Fraternal Order of Police recently took over representation of most of the, uh, police officers and sergeants. Um, they, that group of employees, the lieutenants, have their own certification from the Public Employee Relations Commission. And the officers, sergeants, crime scene investigators, and community services aides, and latent print examiners have their own certification from P R C. P R C is the Public Employee Relations Commission. They're the ones who anoint, if you will, lack of a better term, the actual bargaining unit representative. The P B A was decertified in October as the representative of most of the police officers, because the police officers and those two units decided they didn't, they wanted to seek other representation. So right now, we, and, and that, well, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but that contract expired, so we're negotiating with the F O P, not the P B A right now. But those are the first two union, unions, um, and the first three contracts. Um, the Professional Managers and Supervisors Association is a separate unit. They are, you know, the managers, a lot of the tech people in our, um, organization are part of the P M S A, and other supervisors, um, in, in that group. We've had, I'm glad to say we've had a good relationship with all the bargaining units thus far, and it's, it's really been pretty, pretty smooth sailing. Service Employees International Union, also known as the S E I U, is our other major, um, union at the city that has the bulk of the civil service, um, civil employees, you know, non-sworn, non, non-fire rescue, um, employees. Union negotiations, union negotiations in Florida are largely governed by statute, like they are at the federal level. Um, they are governed by four forty-seven, three oh nine. And they say basically that the bargaining agent for the uni, for the city and the union are, are, it's the bargaining agent for the union and the chief executive officer are the two parties that are negotiating the contract. And in our case, obviously, the bargaining agent is, is whoever they designate within their union. And the chief executive officer, meaning the Mayor, because he's the C E O in our structure of government, is the nominal bargaining unit, bargaining representative for the city. He obviously delegate, he doesn't, well, maybe it's not obvious to you, but he delegates that power or that, that authority to Faye Johnson, who's our City Administrator, and, um, Jose Luis Rodriguez, who negotiates the contracts. But they take their direction from the Mayor, and the Mayor has attended negotiation sessions on occasion. Um, but it's between those two people only. And that becomes significant, because those are the two people that are charged with negotiating and coming to an agreement. We bargain wages, hours, terms, and conditions of employment. Basically, anything that affects their working conditions, the bargaining unit working conditions. And nothing can be changed from the status quo unless we've negotiated something different. The agreements that we eventually reach are reduced to writing, and they're signed by both the, um, the C E O or his delegate and the bargaining unit agent. Once they're signed, they still have to be ratified by each side. The, the agreement isn't binding until the bargaining unit members vote on it, and they ratify it or don't. Um, and the Commission ratifies it or doesn't. Um, by the time you get to the, to the, the ratification stage, you know, you, you think usually that's, I've, I've never been here when neither side has ratified the agreement, thankfully. Um, but it, it may happen, but doesn't, doesn't usually happen, because each side has gotten to the agreement that they believe that is best, in the best interests of each side. Um, the contracts are limited to three years. Statute does not allow it to be longer than three years. Um, and, and once the contracts are expired, like they are with the P B A right now, the, well, the old contract for the P B A, they usually run October one to September thirty of every year. Um, and our last contract with the Police Department, the police unions, ended September thirty. So we're negotiating new terms with the Fraternal Order of Police. But the terms that are in the expired contract still hold in place for the police unions until we change it, because you can't change anything unless you negotiate a change to their terms and conditions of employment. Um, so the new terms sort of stay as the stat, the old terms, rather, stay as the status quo until hopefully very soon you will be ratifying a, a tentative, what has been a, reached as a tentative agreement for at least the, the Police Department, the Police Union, rather, excuse me. The sunshine law applies to all negotiations. That means that when the Mayor, um, the, the Mayor or Ms., Ms. Johnson or Jose Luis cannot meet with any representative from the, the bargaining union on their own outside of the sunshine to discuss matters of negotiations. Um, you know, sunshine law applies. It's right in the statute. Two eighty-six oh one one applies to all negotiations. That's why you'll see the meetings are listed. We have one today with the I F F in the open planning area. They're always publicly noticed within sunshine, and anybody can attend. Any questions? I'm sort, probably just throwing you with- Okay. Um, the bargaining process, it's an ongoing process. I mean, even after you've reached an agreement, you may have, um, little kinks that you wanna work out. So maybe you'll have an M O U during the term of the contract. But generally, it's a back-and-forth process. Um, proposals may be exchanged but not discussed outside of the sunshine. So maybe there's a proposal sent in advance of a meeting, but they don't discuss it on the email. It's just like you all. You can't do anything in email that you can't do, um, outside of the sunshine. Um, this is written into the contracts. Six to eight months prior to the contract expiration, we schedule negotiation dates. Um, sometimes there's an, you know, initial opening of the, of the articles. Each side will say, I'd like to have, I'd like to open X, Y, and Z articles, these, the articles. And sometimes one side just says, let's just open the whole contract. But it's, it's somewhat restricted to how it's written in the contract in terms of the number of articles you can open. You know, like a lot of things in life, most things are always negotiable. But it is, it is dictated by the contract that you have to tell the other side what you'd like to negotiate, which articles you'd like to open. And sometimes those articles have reopeners during the course of the contract. Um, but the, but Human Resources, the Administration, and the City Attorney, they all, we all talk with the departments about how, we always have a representative from the departments there, usually. Or we've consulted with them to find out how a change in one way or another might affect their department and make sure that they're on board, because they're the ones that have to administer the contract. Um, with the, you know, advice of Labor and Employment and the City Attorney Council. Um, I've been doing this for twenty-six years. Um, so I have a pretty good sense of how, how it needs to work. But ultimately, the negotiators are the Administration and, um, the Mayor. Um, so they look to us just to make sure what we're doing is legal. Um, we prepare proposed terms for a new contract. They, let's not forget about finance, of course, because finance has to know what's going on and make sure we can afford whatever we're doing for the unions or what we're offering for the unions. So we identify fiscal impacts with, um, finance. So the negotiation sessions, as I mentioned before, are publicly noticed. Um, the terms are reviewed and discussed by both parties. Um, the articles, eventually, as you go through the contracts, you end up tentatively agreeing initials. We have most articles initialed for, well, I won't get into details. But in any event, you get to a point where you only have one or two items left. You T A tentatively agree to each, and then your T A'd article package hopefully gets larger and larger as you go through negotiations. And then you just have your outstanding articles that you continue to negotiate until you've reduced the whole package to a agreement. Research, revise terms, and continue to negotiation. Those articles, not T A'd. That's exactly what you do throughout the process. And then the contract is put into final form eventually. It's reviewed by the chief negotiator for each side. Um, as I stated before, the majority of the union members have to approve the proposed contract, and the contract is presented to you for final approval. Um, that, again, is in, governed by statute, each side. It's not, it's not binding until it's ratified by both sides. All articles that aren't T A'd, um, you continue in good faith bargaining. Just because you, one side or the other may declare impasse, you still continue in bargaining. And that's actually what happened with the firefighters. We did have to declare impasse, because we felt we were deadlocked in negotiations with them. So we declared impasse, um, in the beginning of September, yet we have continued to negotiate. Um, and we've gone through, um, the processes that you need to go through once one side declares impasse. And that's what I'll go to into now. The impasse process is also, um, dictated by statute. Um, you, to get to impasse, the statute requires and P R C requires that the parties have a reasonable period of negotiations. Um, a reasonable period, of course, is not defined within the statute, but it's generally a few sessions. Um, it, it can be as few as two, but it's usually more than that. Um, and one side or the other has to basically believe you're sort of hopelessly deadlocked, and, and you really do need to invoke the process, which allows you to bring in somebody else to help you to resolve the impasse. And you do that by first declaring impasse in writing. You let the Commission know in Tallahassee, the Public Employee Relations Commission, that you've declared impasse. And you also let the other side know, obviously, that you are declaring impasse. But you have to do that in writing. Doing that starts a, a, a series of steps. Um, again, governed by statute, you can appoint a mediator to help you resolve the impasse, or you can choose a special magistrate to help you, um, resolve the impasse, or they can proceed directly to the Commission. Since I've been here, the process has only been that we have chosen a special magistrate. The parties choose a special magistrate. We've never proceeded directly to the Commission. Um, but this is a, you know, this is a sort of technical, um, procedure that you have to make sure that you're following along the steps. Because obviously, the, the ultimate goal is to get an agreement, but you want someone's help, basically. So you get a roster of special magistrates. If you skip the mediator part, which is what we have done in both times that I've been here, we've declared impasse. Um, and the Public Employee Relations Commission will give you a roster of mediators. The parties strike through, and you, you choose a mediator. Um, and that person helps you define the issues. Um, I don't wanna get ahead of myself. I'm not sure. Yes, the, the special, okay, so the, that's a bit head. Um, let's see here. There we go. Um, so the special magistrate will say, okay, what do we have open? You know, tell me what the, tell me what the issues are, what the articles are. And we've had, in this process, as an example, with the, um, special magistrate, had a couple of teleconferences. He's, he's helped us narrow the issues, and he's been very, very helpful in just helping us narrow the issues, um, and, and just being really accessible, and they wanna help us. Um, he happens to be an attorney, but they're not always attorney, uh, attorney. So in any event, we have not had a hearing yet. Um, we've continued to negotiate, but we've had a couple of, um, sessions with him, and he's helped us sort of define the issues. And it gets, it gives the parties a chance to go ahead and say, in, to a third party, this, this is where we are. This is what we think the issues are. Here's how you can help us, if you can help us. Um, so the special magistrate, if you do get to that, to the hearing process, you have a hearing. Um, we have a hearing to define the issues. Each side presents, just like I would do if I had to present to you down the road. Um, right now, we're not at that stage. But we would have a hearing before the arbitrator, or before the special magistrate to help us get a recommendation from him on how to resolve the issue, him or her. After the hearing officer issues their recommendations on how to resolve the impasse, um, the parties will approve or reject those recommendations. And we have a time limit within which to do that. I, you know, on behalf of the city, I will let the, um, special magistrate know which we specifically approve or reject. If we don't, if we don't reject any portion of the recommendations, they're considered approved. Um, so you basically- So you basically analyze what they've suggested. And if you reject it, then the rejected recommendations are presented to you for resolution. And as soon as, let's see, parties prepare writing, okay, right. This is what we do, we prepare in writing, we tell you what we want you to resolve. And that sort of starts another process whereby, uh-oh, that's that. Very quickly, I'll just tell you that in the end, once the, once we know that there are issues that you need to resolve, that's sort of a gauntlet is put down and you shouldn't be talking to anyone from the union about how those issues may be resolved. It's called the quiet period, I forget, I forget the exact term of it, I apologize. But it's a period in which, since you will be discussing, you will be deciding how the impasse will be resolved. You shouldn't be having any conversations with the union about how it may be resolved, because you're basically the quasi-judicial board at that point, because you'll hear from both sides. But in any event, that's sort of a fast course on union negotiations. And the impasse process is probably a lot of information, but I think, I hope it was clear enough for you to understand. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Growing up as the daughter of a steelworker, the collective bargaining process was a bit different. And I just want to make some clarifications. So typically, in that world that I came from, there would be an impasse and there could potentially be a strike. So would there be that option in collective bargaining, being that steelworking is admittedly different, because it's not a basic public safety need, that we, as a city, I'm sure, are legally required to keep a base level as well as want to keep a base level of safety for our residents? So how does this process work in, we've walked through the processes of impasse and, you know, eventually, pretty much getting down to this body. Is there ever a point in time where there is that strike process that happens in this?
They are not allowed to strike. Our public employees are not allowed to strike.
And so that is per?
It's per statute.
Okay, thank you.
It's also in the contract.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. Just a quick question on the special magistrate process. When you were talking about the possible rejected recommendations, would it, is it 100% recommended or 100% rejected? Or would some pieces be approved or rejected so that some of them may come eventually to the commission, but not all?
Only those that, if either party rejects either any article, those articles will go, if there's no agreement.
But it can be done by article, it doesn't have to be, like if they, if one side rejected one article, it's not the whole thing that has to come for approval, it's just that one article?
Well, ultimately, it will, because you ratify the whole contract, not just pieces of the contract, but the parts that are in dispute are that which you will decide how that should be resolved.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, thank you so much. I have a bit of a basic question. I was just curious about our union employees, not the police and fire, but the others in the city. Is there, are there some positions that are advertised as being union positions? Or they're open to all, or I'm just curious if you can talk a little bit about how that works with the other unions?
Well, the salary plan resolution defines who is in the bargaining unit, and also the certifications define who is in the bargaining unit. Once someone gets their conditional offer of employment, they are told whether or not their, you know, their position is in a bargaining unit, whether it's bargaining unit eligible. I mean, it's really sort of public information, too. I think probably on the jobs, job listings, it might say SEIU eligible or things like that. But it just depends on the position and the certification by PERC.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor. On one of the previous slides some time ago, you talked about the different bargaining units that we have. And on the law enforcement one for police, it looked like the only represented groups were lieutenant and down in ranking. Are there any other represented groups above lieutenant? Like for our captains or assistant chiefs?
Not right now. The captains have petitioned, the PBA petitioned to represent the captains, but that is not decided yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Kimberly Rothenberg, City Attorney, City of West Palm Beach. Nice to see you all again this morning. I'm going to give you a tiny bit of history before we dive into your form of government.
That can't be right. November 5th, 1984?
Oh, 1884. I had corrected that once, and apparently, it's not there, but it's 1884.
Okay.
So apologize for that. So the city of West Palm Beach was first incorporated as a town on November 5th, 1884. At that time, it was part of Dade County. And it consisted of approximately 48 blocks. Subsequent to the incorporation, the Florida Legislature created West Palm Beach as a city in 1903. I'm going to hand, show you, this is just a visual of, at the time, this was the city of West Palm Beach's charter and ordinance. This, I couldn't find one from 1903, but this is 1925. And much like the size of the city changed from 48 blocks, so too did the laws and rules applicable to today. And part of the reason of the difference between the charter and the ordinances from 1923 to current is that the dynamics changed. Prior to 1968, the only thing that a municipal government could do was what was in the charter that was approved by the legislature, and also Florida law, whatever the Florida law was that we could do. So along comes the constitutional revisions and the creation of home rule power. So you hear the statement that the legislature is eroding our home rule power. So what we're talking about is we create laws and rules that we think are necessary for us as a government to do those things that are required for residents. And we put them in our code of ordinances. The legislature will pass a statute that says, for instance, no, city, you can't regulate the home-based businesses, they're going to be regulated like this. And there it is. That's the erosion of the home rule power that was created in 1968. The only way that that power is to be eroded is either through general or special laws created by the legislature, the Florida Constitution itself, through the voters, and the city's own charter. So we could have the ability to do something, but our own charter limits that ability in some way. So the city's charter is to it, like the Florida Constitution is to the state of Florida. It tells us, it sets forth the plate as to how we're going to operate. And then our ordinances carry out the powers that are created in the charter. So our form of government, we are a municipal corporation. There is a mayor-commission form of government. There's two types, it's the mayor-commission or the commission-manager form. This is a strong mayor form of government, where your mayor is your chief executive officer and your administrative head of all of the affairs of the city. In order to be mayor in this great city of West Palm Beach, there's a requirement of a six-month residency anywhere within the city boundaries prior to the date of the election. The term is for four years, and you can have two consecutive terms. We also have our commission. There is district commissioners, there's five districts. Again, just like the mayor's residency requirements, there's a six-month residency requirement of residing within your district before the election date. You are elected for two years with four consecutive terms. These are all provisions out of the charter. Yes, Commissioner?
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I had heard in maybe the not-too-recent past, that, not-too-distant past, that there had possibly been some efforts to change the terms. I know that other nearby municipalities have changed their terms. What's the history on that within our city?
The last time the terms were changed, and I'm going from memory, is when Mayor Congressman Frankel was mayor. At that time, I believe, is the last time that the terms were changed. I don't recall exactly what they were prior to the change, but your current structure was changed at that time, or attempted to be changed. It may not have, I have to look back at it.
No, term limits were imposed.
They're in your charter.
2012, I think. When I was elected in 2011, there were no term limits. I think that next year.
Was that when Frankel was mayor, right?
No, 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 it was under Mayor Moyau.
Moyau.
I think Mayor Frankel may have appointed the Charter Review Commission, but they reported out after Mayor Moyau was elected.
2011 was the last change of the charter, 11 and 12.
Yeah, and then it was put to the voters. And in that 2011 election is when the voters approved the term limits.
And prior to that, I don't believe that there were term limits. But I'll pull, I'll pull it, but I don't think there were any term limits.
There were not term limits on commissioners. There were term limits on mayors under the, before that. And I think there was a move at some point to see if they could get a third term for Mayor Frankel. But that didn't go anywhere. But they're always, they're always under the charter, there are always term limits on mayors. And then the term limits on, for commissioners were imposed in that last, in the 2011.
Yeah, I can pull the iteration of what the charter was prior to 11 and send it to you so you all have it and know the history.
Commissioner Warren, I'm sorry, did you have a follow-up?
No, thank you so much.
Commissioner Warren?
I believe that the terms, that it was two-year terms with Lois Frankel, Mayor Frankel, and the term limit was in 2012, under Jerry, Mayor Moyau. And I want maybe some clarification from Commissioner Lambert. Were you asking if the terms would remain two years? Or if the term of two years was something that we were considering?
No, I know we're not considering right now. I don't believe that there's anything for consideration. I was just curious how we came to it, what was the history behind it, term limits, as well as the length of the terms?
Anything in your charter, that's in the charter, has to be approved by the voters. So that's done in a couple of ways. You can either, as a commission, bring forward through ordinance a requested change that goes to the voters for vote, or every so often, a committee or a commission of folks are put together to look at the charter review and do a charter review of all of the charter in its entirety. And their proposed changes then go before the electorate for a vote. So there's a couple of ways that that happens, or can happen.
Any other questions, comments? Proceed.
So we're going to talk specifically about some of the mayor's executive power. Again, he's charged with the proper administration and conduct of the executive work and affairs of the city. He presides at all meetings of the commission. In his absence, obviously, we have a process set up where the president of the commission would in his stead. And in the absence of both the mayor and the president, then there would be a vote among your body to decide who would preside over any particular meeting. The mayor votes only in the instance of a tie, when you're sitting as a commission. He also can veto actions taken by the commission. He appoints and removes the city administrator without approval or ratification by the city. He also appoints and removes the chief of police, the fire chief, and the city attorney. But those do require ratification by three affirmative votes. He also appoints the department directors personally and/or as designated to the city administrator.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Rothenberg, if you could talk about the veto action under what circumstances? This is just kind of the first I've been introduced to this power of that position. Can you talk about where the circumstances would be that would allow the position of the mayor to veto an action of the commission?
It's all of those items that are voted for at one of your commission meetings on a resolution or an ordinance. If the mayor disagrees with the outcome, he would have, and I believe I'm going from memory and I'll look it up to make sure I'm right, 48 hours to veto that action. Following that, the item would come back at your next agenda meeting. And it would take a four-fifth vote to override the mayor's veto.
Follow-up? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, I just had a question about that as well. I wonder if that includes the budget process in terms of veto power? Or if we pass a budget as a commission, would that be an exception?
It should not be an exception, but I'll look at it more specifically and make sure. But it's another action that, you know, if it was vetoed, then it would take four fifths to pass. And that's without looking to see if there's specific budgetary authority that overrides the veto power provided in the charter. While Faye is speaking, I'll look to that and see if there's something specific.
Commissioner Lambert, did you have your hand up? Okay, Mr. President?
Thank you, just an interesting conversation. So what if an ordinance or a resolution passes with a four-fifth vote? Or a majority, or, you know, a vote of everyone in support? Would the mayor be able to veto that and it comes back, or no?
To my recollection, there's nothing that says he couldn't veto it, that would have to then pass again by four fifths vote.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, proceed.
So in addition to the other enumerated positions that the city mayor appoints, he also appoints the city administrator. The city administrator is a charter position. The charter's duties that she performs are performed under the supervision of the mayor. She coordinates all activities of the administrative departments, divisions, and agencies. She also serves as a liaison between the mayor, the commission, the departments, divisions, boards, and commissions that are appointed. And she provides administrative, those administrative and executive duties as the mayor assigns to her. She may be dismissed, just like she is appointed by the mayor without approval by the commission. And I don't mean she, but a administrator, forgive me. And also, the salary of the city administrator, the commission does have a hand in looking at the recommendations of the mayor and approving the salary. There are numerous other enumerated powers that are assigned to the mayor, which I'm only going to highlight a few, but they're all in Section 3.01 of the charter. One is, and that you all know or unaware of this, that he prepares the annual budget, submits it to the commission for approval. And then, once it's approved, he administers the budget after adoption and makes sure that the expenditures are pursuant to the adopted budget. He also appoints and removes members of the boards and committees, all of them except those that have some statutory obligation that directs otherwise or a provision within our code that provides otherwise. And I'll give you an example is the Internal Audit Committee. He also directs and supervises the administration of all departments, divisions, agencies of the city in its governmental operation. He recommends to the commission for consideration the pay scales of all of the city's officers, employees of the commission. He fixes those salaries and wages of those who are hired within the pay scale that's established by the commission, prepares the agenda for you all to consider at all of your commission meetings, prepares executive orders as deemed necessary and proper. And we can give you an example of all of the executive orders that have had to come about as a result of COVID that were subsequently, maybe legally, maybe not, quashed by the governor. And we've taken some corrective action in that regard. We adopted recently, I don't know if you saw it when you came in, but there is a new policy as opposed to an executive order, because that also is within the mayor's prerogative to establish policies for operation of the city. And the new policy requires the masks to continue to be worn until the mayor revokes that policy within and on city property. Any questions as it relates to the mayor's powers?
Questions?
Okay, so we're going to go on to commission's charter powers. So the commission, much like the mayor, is the executive arm of the commission and oversees the administrative prongs of the city's operation. You are the legislative arm of the city. You're charged with setting the policy of the city. And the mayor then is charged with implementing that policy through all of the various departments and boards and committees and other operational components of the city. So that you hold all of the powers that are not specific components of the city. So that you hold all of the powers that are not specifically delegated to the mayor, the internal auditor, and the electors, all set up within your charter. You adopt the policy of the city, the legislation. You do it either through resolutions and ordinances. You do that at your commission meetings, following your rules of procedure that are outlined in two dash thirty-one of the code, that was also adopted, consistent with the charter powers that were provided in the charter. You also approve the annual budget. You review recommendations for and approvals of employees' pay scales. You also have the authority and the ability to, but I've never seen it done, conduct an investigation into the, into something that's occurred within the exercise of your legislative powers. That's in the charter. I haven't seen anyone ever have to open an investigation relating to an ordinance or a resolution that was adopted, but it's there for you if we need to do it. You ratify the appointments of the mayor, as previously indicated under the mayor's powers. You appoint and remove the internal auditor, and you also approve the annual audit plans. Finally, you can request the department head to appear before the city commission to provide information and answer questions at public meetings. Those members are here when they present to you, much like I'm presenting to you today, information and to answer questions. But what you can't do, also included within the charter, I'm not going to create these you-cannots, but the charter does, you can't direct or request the appointment or removal of any person to office. Office is a defined term that really means the mayor's staff, the administrative appointees, the employees, the department heads. You can't ask for somebody to be hired or to be fired in any of those positions. You can't take part in the appointment or removal of the appointment officers and employees in the administrative service of the city. You can't deal with administrative matters, i.e. those matters that the mayor's charged with implementing. And you cannot give orders to the mayor's employees, either publicly or privately. So if I'm standing here, providing information to you, and you're asking me questions, you can't tell me to go back and do, I shouldn't use me, because you actually can tell me I'm an exception, or, or if you need something from the city attorney, you do have access to the attorney. But if it was some other staff member, planning member, you couldn't direct them to undertake some action. That, that directive has to come from the mayor or through the mayor. That concludes commission powers, if, unless there's any specific questions.
Okay.
Mayor? Commissioner?
Oh, there's, okay. I thought I looked down that way. Commissioner Fox?
Sorry, thank you. I just, I'm not sure what category this falls in, but I have a question about the charter in terms of, if we wanted to change the charter in, on some item, is that something that would come directly from the mayor to be approved by us, or is that something we can suggest individually, that we'd look at something that needs to be changed or updated? I'm just curious how that, kind of, what the process would be to begin something like that.
Charter change, it follows a statutory process, and also, the process is outlined within our charter as well. But like many ordinances, if you have a suggestion for an ordinance, those suggestions can come through the city administrator for management by the mayor.
Follow-up? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Is, the last bullet on the commissioner charter powers is about requesting department heads. Is there, I don't believe that this would be written, but maybe it's unwritten timeframe that that would happen in?
I'm sorry?
Is there an unwritten or written timeframe in which that request would be met? The last bullet, request for department head to appear before commission?
Well, generally speaking, the folks who are presenting the things to you to consider are either already scheduled, and if you need someone to appear to explain something at a gender review, you would say, hey, I, I would like staff to present on this, or I have questions about this, and the mayor would know, and this would direct the staff to be present. Or, many times, when you all submit items to the city administrator for your work sessions, that's another time that you're requesting staff to be present, to give information and to answer questions.
Yep. I understand that. My question is, is there a timeframe in which that request would need to be met?
There is no specific timeframe provided for in the code, but I think that it, it would be as early as administration could, you know, handle or manage those requests that are coming in through their administrative function. But Fay?
Fay Johnson, city administrator. I think you hit on it, on your last comment. I was going to say, we always take into consideration, you know, what the request is, you know, how much time is needed for staff to be prepared, and if it's an item that requires, you know, research or due diligence to be done, all that affects the timing at which it will be brought forward. However, as a general rule, we try to be as responsive to commissioners' requests to bring items forward in as timely of a manner as possible, but certainly, we have to allow staff the sufficient time to be prepared to present the item.
Follow-up?
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
The members of the commission staff, are they considered the mayor's employees?
That's a tricky question. I have a slide specifically for it. They are, they're employees of the city, but let me get to the slide, and we'll go through that as well.
What was the question? I couldn't, I couldn't.
Are the, the members of the staff in the commission staff considered mayor's employees?
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Very good question.
So I know you all have heard that you, and I've heard comments about your discretionary account and the limits of those accounts, so I will go over those for you. Those are for fundraising efforts that are less than the five hundred and one dollars per event, and they have to be for a public purpose. So fundraising events is, is defined as an event within Palm Beach County from a 501(c)(3), community service organization, when the fundraising event supports a project or activity benefiting the residents of West Palm Beach. Those are appropriate expenditures. The events can't be political functions, but they can be events where the presence of the mayor or the commissioners is prudent to represent the city's interests. And these parameters came from an ordinance, thirty-two fifty-three dash ninety-nine, that was adopted way back in, in nineteen ninety-nine. And the reason is that you can't spend public dollars without a public purpose. So the commission at that time identified what the public purpose was in a formal adoption of an ordinance, and that's where your parameters for the expenditure of those district account funds comes from. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. So it is limited to fundraising only?
Yes, and I will provide you all with a copy of the ordinance, so that you can see the terms that were set forth at that time.
So if an organization, or maybe a group, that didn't have a 501(c)(3) yet, I'm just trying to think of a scenario, and they were pulling together a meeting or an event, and we wanted to help provide supplies, or food, or something for that, that wouldn't fall underneath this, because they're not a 501(c)(3) yet, maybe they were trying to become one. It would only be for a 501(c)(3).
Correct.
Period. Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Commissioner Shof.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then, yeah, let me, let me handle this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Shof, and then we'll go to Commissioner Fox.
That's where my eyes went, and I should let the mayor conduct and preside over his meeting. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. I think, you know, Commissioner Lambert brings up a good point, and, and more to the, the question, you know, I'll give an example. As commissioners, we participated in celebrating a hundred years, oh, I'm sorry, a hundred days of school, and did teacher appreciation, which benefited teachers throughout our, our districts. You know, everyone covered their own district. And so, when purchasing, you know, kind of supplies for those events, those would not be considered, they're part of a public purpose there to honor and appreciate our teachers within our own districts, within the city of West Palm Beach, but not coordinated through a 501(c)(3). So in order for those to be considered expenditures for commission, they would have to be run through teacher appreciation 501(c)(3), and not just a community-based grassroots event that we said we were going to appreciate teachers.
Correct. As, as stated in this ordinance that was previously adopted, that's not to say that, you know, public purpose is a defined term. The commission in nineteen ninety-nine defined it for us. Could there be other definitions that we could amend or change this ordinance to that gives it broader public purpose and still meets the dictates of the law? I could certainly look at that.
Is there a place within commission budget, I want to be mindful of making sure that there's oversight, and there's not just expenditures coming into commission budgets that are, you know, that could be one day abused down the line, but is there maybe, am I looking at the wrong line item under a commission budget, that there would be something else that would be defined within the commission budget that would take care of those expenditures, or that we could potentially use for the public benefit?
And I am going to defer to Fay, not knowing what is in the commission budget.
In, in terms of the different types of requests that comes through, your commission staff prepares the, we call it the, geez, name just went right out of my head, the invoice that they prepare, and that comes to me for review. So I always review it, you know, against the ordinance. You know, your budget does not detail out, you know, the various 501(c)(3) organizations. That's left at your discretion. But each of the items come to me for sign-off, and again, I review it. In the early part of my term, I think there was some question by your staff, you know, in terms of whether or not an organization was a 501(c)(3) and, and fit into what the ordinance spelled out. So I sat with Phyllis Brooks to walk through that, because she was unclear in terms of processing the one-twenty-one, just came back in my head, thank you. But there is a review done before it's signed off on in process.
Thank you. And, and I think I, I understand that point of view, making sure there's a qualified 501(c)(3). If there were an event, like I had just described, it would either have to be run through a qualified 501(c)(3). The, the further question I had was, there's not another budget line item as it exists today, unless it were created by this body that would address the needs of, for example, a teacher appreciation day that was not a 501(c)(3) run event?
There is not. And, and if it were to be processed on a one-twenty-one, it would be an item that I would not sign off on, and then we would have to decide what happens with the commission's support for that kind of item, because I have to follow what the ordinance dictates.
Understood, and, and certainly not suggesting that we're, we're running against the process here, just trying to understand where pieces may fit. So I understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. My question was a little bit similar, but I was curious if, for example, I wanted to have an event in my district with residents to have a meet and greet, or, you know, to talk to me about issues that were going on, and I wanted to have coffee and donuts or something. Is that something that would fall under, that I could use for my district account, even though I, obviously, that would probably, that would not be any kind of 501(c)(3), but it would be a public benefit directly, you know, impacting the community and the residents of my district?
We have not processed payments for those kind of meetings. And what we have done, if there are meetings held here at City Hall that fits within a public purpose under certain circumstances, it is permissible that you can provide water and, and, you know, food of some nature. But in terms of within a commission district, you know, I have not had one of those to come across my desk, and there is that provision that talks about an economic benefit for the city, or, or meeting for a public purpose, under which we have done it administratively. But I can't speak factually to a commissioner holding a meeting within his or her district and processing a request of that nature.
And I think it falls back to just the general broad principle that all dollars that the city has must be expended for a public purpose. A lot of times, those public purposes by the courts are considered very broadly, and it's, it's those purposes that the commission and the body declares as a public purpose. So there's a potential that you could create a resolution or an ordinance indicating what types of things qualify for public purpose that would help in making those expenditures, but you also have to have the budget available for them and things of that nature as well.
All right. Mr. President, and then Commissioner Lambert?
The reality is, a lot of the time, that these neighborhood groups actually have 501(c)(3)'s, so you can get around that just by making a donation to the 501(c)(3) and letting them purchase the coffee, the donuts, the cookies, or whatever. We, Commissioner Fox and I did something similar when we did the hand sanitizer event, where we were providing hand sanitizer to public safety, our firefighters, police officers, hospitals, things like that. What we did is, since the firefighters had a 501(c)(3), we made the donation and ran it all through their 501(c)(3) to make sure it was legit, because each of us donated from our discretionary accounts. So I think that there's usually some way of, of doing it, just because of the fact that there's often the 501(c)(3)'s attached to these groups.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I have come across both situations that Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Shof have brought up, and I have, out of my own pocket, paid for these items for the last three years now. And, you know, I, seems like there's a lot of discussion about this topic, and maybe we could set a time to speak to the city attorney, or within our commissioner budgeting process, to just explore this and look at this a little bit further, to see if there's anything that we may want to suggest.
Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, and, and thanks for the suggestion, Commissioner Lambert. You know, I, I think it does deserve a bigger conversation, because what I certainly want to be mindful of, we're making decisions for this commission and for commissions into the future, and what we don't want to create is the ultimate donut and coffee fund. You know, I don't think that's what anyone here is, is trying to look at, but what we're trying to do is be flexible in the ways that we can provide community benefit. So I also want to be mindful that commissions years from now don't end up in a situation where there's just kind of a catch-all expense account. I'm not trying to work around anything. I think our systems are put in process for, in place for a purpose. So, you know, to the extent we could have the larger discussion, and you can continue down the line with your commission onboarding, I'm supportive of that as well.
Any other questions, comments on this item? Okay, continue.
So, to the commission role with the commission staff, as I've seen it over the years, and how it currently is operating, the commission prepares the, this is a recommendation currently, that, that you, as a body, would prepare your office protocols and procedures, that you would approve changes to the proposed budget, you do that as a body, and that you manage performance, issues, and discipline as a body of your staff members. The commission president, though, acts as the department head. He prepares the commission office budget. He prepares annual evaluations of the commission staff, and directs and supervises the day-to-day operations of commission staff. And then finally, the individual commissioners, as it relates to staff, you individually would request the services that you need to be performed by your staff. And that's kind of just a broad overview, touching on the subjects of, of the commission office and the commission staff, who while the staff member is an employee of the city, does not report directly to the mayor, but rather reports to the commission.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Warren?
Yes, it, it did. But I do have a follow-up question.
That's fine, that's fine.
How do I understand what the roles are of the commission staff? What, what are their roles and responsibilities as it relates to supporting the commissioners?
Well, at, at first, I mean, their, their duties and their roles are outlined in their job descriptions. And if it's like most job descriptions, it has some specific tasks, and then it has a broader category and says, and other duties as assigned. So if, if there are questions, and you all need to collaborate and decide what, what specifically you need from your staff, and then I would recommend that you have a work session to discuss that and put together, as a commission, your protocols and procedures, or things that you want your staff to do.
Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think this is an important slide, and I know, as I came into the role of commission president prior to Commissioner Peduzzi, it was something that I found to be a complication of the process that we have set up, in that we have commission staff that are employed essentially on administration, but are directed by those who are not their supervisor. who are not their supervisors. And it creates a system that's difficult on the staff that works there, because there's not a day-to-day administrator like there would be for other staff departments, as, you know, commissioners are not full-time employees, so they're not here full-time. It's difficult as commission president to give a review on an annual basis based upon your in-depth knowledge of one year and sometimes less than that, depending on when you come on board as commission president, to give an annual review to an employee. So it creates a dynamic that's kind of difficult for both sides of the equation, for commissioners as supervisors and for employees as employees of that office. So, to the extent, and I know I had a long conversation with Administrator Johnson trying to untangle this knot when I came into being president as well, and clearly wasn't able to come up with a really great resolution for that, but I put that out as food for thought to my fellow commissioners and, you know, to the task of Commissioner Peduzzi, which is not an easy one as well, that we kind of have this dynamic that creates an inherent conflict. And so, I don't have all the answers, but I put it out there for discussion.
Well, to the extent that your review process, if you felt like one individual shouldn't be reviewing, then your other option is to meet as a body and do your reviews publicly.
And while I appreciate that, I don't know that that completely resolves the issue as it goes down the line. There's still the potential that one commissioner that was president prior to wouldn't be on the dais the next time, as opposed to the structure that's set up where you have a department head that is in charge of the planning department and is a consistent supervisor, not only to do staff evaluations, but to disseminate information, to just be part of that organization. So essentially, the employees that work in the commission office operate kind of in a limbo place, where they're employees of administration but don't have a direct city administrative supervisor. Their supervisor is a member of the commission.
But they're employees of the commission.
They're not employees of administration.
Was it not just clarified that they were employees of administration?
I'm not sure where you came up with that, but I think they're employees that directly report to the commission.
They're employees that directly report to the commission, but they are not commission employees in the sense that the internal auditor reports to the commission. This is distinctly different than anything that was ever directed, whether I was sitting as commission president or not. So I see Commissioner Peduzzi nodding his head and maybe can provide more clarification, but I was always directed that they are employed by the mayor's administration, part of administrative staff.
I don't know who applies you to that. Anyway, do either of you want to speak to that? I've always considered them as employees of the commission and serve at the will of the commission.
Certainly, they are city employees.
They're city employees.
Employees that report to the commission.
It would be very, just not legally, but it would be challenging for, let's say for the sake of discussion, we said the city attorney is going to be the day-to-day supervisor of the commission staff. I wouldn't have any, I would be in no better position to prepare an evaluation or to direct staff or manage staff or to know what it is they are doing or not doing appropriately than, I wouldn't, yeah.
All right, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. President?
So, under our charter, the administration and the mayor is responsible for all staff. There is no exception for commission staff. I think that's what Commissioner Shof is getting to, that technically, under our charter, there is not an exception. They're employees of the city. Technically, they're under the control of city administration and the mayor. Unless there's some provision in our charter that says they're actually directly the employees or directly, that they're an exception, as the internal auditor is an exception, they're not listed.
There is no charter exception for the commission staff. You're correct in that.
Right, but there is for the internal audit department.
There is a specific provision relating specifically to the internal auditor, the creation of the auditor, and we have a slide on that coming up.
But we are, I can direct-
There is not a separate charter provision that directs specifically the commission staff. You're correct.
Right, but there is one specifically that allows the commission to direct the actions of the internal auditor.
Yes, the commission approves the audit plan and things of that nature, yes.
Right, thank you.
And does the evaluation through the audit committee. That structure is not set up for the staff of the commission, no.
So does that therefore mean that the staff is subject to the direction of city administration?
No, because it doesn't say that either.
All right. I mean, just because there's not the exception that is in place for the internal auditor doesn't mean that the staff, by default, reports to the administration.
No, because, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the code provisions that sets up the mayor's office, the staff from the city commission office is not listed there. Their organizational chart doesn't include those employees.
Well, thank you very much, and I think this is a difference in conversation in that previous city administrators, not Administrator Johnson, had very much directed that the staff did not report to commission, that they were mayor's staff, and at one point was directed that if we were to hire someone else in there, it would not be at the direction of this commission, it would be to the point of the city administrator. Again, current city administration not, not part of this conversation.
Consider the source. That's all I'll say.
I'm simply stating that the leadership that was in place at the time when we were being directed was stating that that was the direction we should take. If there is a different direction, I think it behooves this commission to know what that direction is, because up until this conversation here today, it has always been directed that the commission staff reported to city administration. So if that's a difference in direction today, then please, let's have that conversation.
Have the conversation, but I will state very clearly, I do not consider commission staff to be part of my administration. The commission staff, they report to the commissioners. You have hiring and firing authority. I don't know, am I overstating? You know, you-
Not in my view.
You guys work with them. I don't. No one in my administration works with them on a day-to-day basis. All right, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm giving you and the city administrator an opportunity to weigh in on this. I see his hand up. All right, Mr. President?
Thank you, and I'm happy to hear the discussion taking place, because there was that issue brought up as to, you know, the fact that there didn't seem to be an exception in the, in our code or in the charter with regard to employees, because they're all employees of the administration from what I see by default in the charter. And I think moving forward with that knowledge, it'll make it easier for us probably to control the direction of our office. But I think to some degree, they are still under the auspices of city administration, because they were called to work at the vaccination site without the president being asked or told about it, which I don't have a problem with, because I think that everyone should, you know, participate in that. If it's a citywide thing, then every department should participate in it. But I think the practical aspect is that in the past, there was some confusion as to who actually controls those employees, and I think the vaccination site is just an example of the fact that they still are under the control of city administration.
If I could, and I think this is a very healthy discussion. It has, and I've only been city administrator for a year and four months, so I certainly don't have the historical knowledge of how it has operated in the past, but I have never been apprised that in the past, you know, city administration actually directed the commission staff. So I've just operated based on discussion with the mayor and how we are set up, and the fact that they are commission staff, and from a practical matter, they report to the commission on a day-to-day basis. And while certainly there are examples, particularly when we look at the vaccine assignment, where that was directed by administration, there are other examples, if I look at, you know, remote work. That was a direction, you know, that approved their remote work assignment prior to administration having the across-the-board remote work assignment. So I think, you know, there's some variation in where direction is coming from, but as the city administrator, I certainly have not taken a leadership role in directing the commission staff at all, because from a practical manner, you know, they are commission staff, and so I've always just processed that and interpreted it to mean that they received their direction from the commission on a day-to-day basis, not from me as the city administrator.
Commissioner Shof?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a few things. Both the remote working conditions and the vaccination site were both approved by me under my commission presidency, so I apologize, Commissioner Peduzzi, if that wasn't translated during that transition. And both of those decisions were made. The remote policy was not made until there was an official policy declared by the city, so I did take city administration's direction on that, and some direction on the vaccine site too. Again, to Commissioner's point, wanting to make sure that we were participating, as every other department did. I think that my point in saying, let's have the conversation, I certainly hear where the mayor is, loud and clear. What I would like to see is, how do we solidify that for mayors into the future and for commissioners into the future, to just say, so they don't have to have this conversation, so they can say, here's what it says in the charter, these are the employees that fall under this category, and here's who they report to. So I guess that would be my request, Mayor, at your approval.
What is the request? You want to have a conversation? I mean, we're having a conversation. What's the request? I'm sorry.
The request is to solidify in writing what, where the employees go, because I think your interpretation was that they were being managed by commission. Commissioner Peduzzi's interpretation seems to be the same as mine, where we were under the impression that they were city employees, so if we could just solidify the language, so that way commissioners into the future and mayors in the future don't have to have this conversation, and, you know, so that way, if something comes up in the future under mayors years from now, it doesn't become an issue.
Well, I can certainly give you a written email or something to what my position is on this. I'm not saying it's binding on every mayor that follows me, but I can certainly tell you what my position is under this administration. We could put something together. Do we have an issue with that? Is that all right?
I have no issue with that.
All right, we'll put some together. Mr. President?
Thank you. Briefly, in follow-up, I did have a discussion with our city attorney with regard to the fact that once the charter is again reviewed, it probably is something that would make sense to, you know, have the commission staff handled in a similar manner as the audit, internal audit staff pursuant to the charter, just so that it's clear going forward.
We could make that proposal. Again, it's going to be subject to, charter changes are subject to voter approval.
Yeah, I mean, and the charter, if you want something in the charter, that's a whole different conversation.
I'm not asking for it to be done just for that, just once, 10 years from now, once we review the charter again, and if there's changes that are made that have to go to the voter, that could be something that could be, you know, changed at that time.
Yeah, I mean, there's usually, there's generally a charter committee that's put together, and if that's on their agenda, that can certainly be considered. But I'm happy to put something in writing which articulates my position with respect to commission staff and the fact that they report to the commissioners and are subject to the direction of the commissioners. And in the future, if there is an issue where we would like for commission staff to help us with a citywide effort, we will certainly run that through the commission president. I think that's appropriate. My apologies if that didn't happen before. I didn't know that that did not happen. Does that address your?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, any questions, comments on this particular item? I think it's been a very healthy discussion. Hopefully, it's given you direction as to how to deal with your staff going forward. Okay, very good.
All right, on to the internal audit role. So the internal audit is again a charter structure. The purpose of it is to ensure that there is independence in the audit function and to coordinate the work and needs of both the city mayor and the commission. So the commission points and removes the internal auditor. The removal from office is forecause and with three affirmative votes of the commission body. You also appoint a internal audit committee. It has five members. Three of those members are appointed by you as the commission. One member is the mayor or the mayor's designee, and the commission president also sits as a member on the board. As it relates to the appointed, the three member-at-large members, they must be city residents with expertise in auditing, and they're appointed for three-year terms. If they exceed those terms, again, they come back to you to be extended on the terms. We did attempt a charter change to this provision that did not pass, so that we could have either a resident or somebody who has a business within the city, because it's difficult to get that auditing experience that we need. So we continue to fill that position sometimes with members more than three years, because we have a limited supply of qualified committee members. The commission president, in addition to being a member, is also the chairperson for the committee. And that's kind of a big, broad summary of the audit function and how it works. Questions?
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor. And before we move off of those matters that the commission has direct control over, meaning internal audit and commission staff, I just want to make sure that there's some question as to whether the commissioners could speak about the office structure or our office, commission office operations outside of the sunshine. And what I would suggest, since there was some question as to whether we can discuss those logistics and things outside of sunshine, that we have an additional workshop where the commissioners could each weigh in as to what, how they would like to see the commission office run, the organization of it, whether it's responsive to their needs, what would be more responsive to their needs. So if we could, if we could do that, Mayor, with your permission, at some, schedule sometime in the future to have a workshop where we could, you know, publicly discuss what we're looking for in the, in the operation of the commission office, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Madam City Attorney, you've articulated the position that any of those discussions have to be in the sunshine, correct?
Especially when you're assigning specific duties that as a body you'll expect as a whole for your staff, yes.
So having heard that, Madam City Administrator, if we could schedule that workshop, and I know we've got a full schedule, but let's bump and move that up sooner rather than later, because I think it's very important for the commissioners to have this conversation so they can get their office functioning the way they want their office functioning. And if they have to have it in the sunshine, then we will put it on a upcoming, soon upcoming workshop agenda, please.
I will take a look at the schedule and rebalance it.
Yeah, 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 but let's do it sooner rather than later, because-
We'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. Is city residency a known prerequisite, and in the event that they move out of the city, does that mean that they're no longer eligible to serve in that position?
The charter speaks to appointing a member and the qualification to be appointed as being a resident. It's probably, it more than likely doesn't speak to what if they move outside of, but certainly the intent was to have the individual a resident.
Okay, Commissioner Shof?
Thank you. Just a follow-up procedurally to Commissioner Peduzzi's question. You know, frequently, we have things that come up office administration-wise that we need to discuss, certainly open to doing it in a mayor-commission-work session type environment, but if at some point Commissioner Peduzzi or any of the commissioners wanted to convene to have that administrative discussion, could we do that and then just speak to the city attorney's office to publicly notice it, do in the open working area in that form? So, of course, in the sunshine and publicly notice as according to law, but not necessarily have to do at a mayor-commission-work session as, again, these things come up, maybe quarterly, et cetera.
Yes, you could convene a meeting of the commissioners that isn't, I mean, in practice, it's a workshop, right? But all your public meetings requirements, and we'll go over this when we go over public meetings and sunshine law, but the requirements are that it's publicly noticed, that minutes are taken, and that there's an opportunity of the public to be heard. So if, if you used the open meeting area and it's large enough to hold whoever wants to be there, you're still meeting the requirements of the public meeting law.
Okay, yeah, certainly want everything to be in the sunshine, et cetera, but to the extent that we, as a body, can convene without, you know, putting hardship onto administration, et cetera, but still comply with sunshine and-
I think we can, I think we can work through that.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll address it more specifically when, we're going to meet again on Friday and specifically talk about public records in sunshine. If, if I, if when I review the law, it's something different, I'll let you know, but as I stand here, if the three requirements of the public meeting are met before the body meets, you should be okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just encourage you, Madam City Attorney, to work with them. To me, it's kind of awkward, but I respect the fact that that's your opinion, but whatever needs to be done under the sunshine, please work with them so they can have these conversations, whether it's a workshop, mayor-commission workshop, or something else so that they have clear direction on how they can proceed in order to take care of the administrative tasks that they need to take care of, they have their office running efficiently.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so, but to that point, I'll still have city administration schedule a workshop because that seems to be the quickest way to get this conversation going, but if sunshine requires public comment, we generally don't have public comment at mayor-commission-work sessions. So.
That's true.
How would we handle that aspect? What are you thinking, Commissioner Shoff?
Just a question, as we talked about, we generally don't have public comment, we're under sunshine now, we don't have public comment now, does sunshine require the public comment or it just requires that the conversation that we're having?
An opportunity to be heard. And generally what that, that is, is that you don't necess, and this is a training, so while we are having it in the sunshine, training is an exception from the sunshine law, but we like to be open and transparent, so we do our trainings in the sunshine. But, question again, it just jumped right out of my brain, I'm sorry.
You were, we were talking about requiring public comment to comply with sunshine, but we are under sunshine now and we do not have public comment at these meetings.
Public comment is required only before final action is taken on a particular matter. So, for instance, if, if you were getting together in a workshop and you generally don't have public comment in your workshops, but you were going to take final action to, let's say, approve a proto-office protocol and procedure, you would have to have a public comment or you don't meet the sunshine law.
Understood.
Okay, so they can have the discussion in the workshop, but if there is a formal office procedure that's adopted, that could be scheduled for a.
Commission meeting and then you could take public comment then, you could do it that way.
Okay, all right. Mr. President.
It just seems overly cumbersome in the running of a commission office and two employees to have to have a public meeting and then go to a commission meeting to have public comment on how we would like to see our commission office run. I'm just, I'm just frustrated, I think, is more than anything and, but if, if you, Madam City Attorney, think that that is the requirement, that we have to do this in the sunshine, but I would think it's just a public policy. It doesn't make any sense. It's not like when the mayor makes a decision on an employee in a department that that has to be publicly vetted. I mean, it just, it doesn't, it's not really fair to the employees if we're going to talk about individual employees or the makeup or structure of our office, that it be public. But if that's what it requires, I would just ask maybe that we could look into it further and see if there's exceptions when it comes to.
I will exhaust every avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. But so meanwhile, do you still want us to schedule this workshop?
I think we have to get the conversation started. I don't think we're going to be talking about individual employees or vetting that stuff publicly. I think, though, that we need to talk about whether the commission office, in general, how we feel about its operation and maybe some things that we'd like to consider moving forward.
I'm just trying to accommodate you guys, so if we can, if that seems to get the conversation started sooner, then we'll put it on the mayor-commission workshop.
Yes, please. Absolutely.
Mr. President, with your, I'd love your thoughts on this, but, you know, I hate to bump something that may be of importance to the city for us to consider at a work session, and I'd also maybe like to consider what Commissioner Shoff said where it's maybe a quarterly meeting or something where it's after work sessions on Mondays where it's, it's not necessarily part of this formal procedure that we currently have for city issues, I guess, that maybe it's a separate meeting about commissioner office needs.
Mr. President.
With all due respect to everyone involved, and I understand and I appreciate administration, the mayor's willingness to, to accommodate us, I think there is nothing really that's going to be more important than the, our ability to be responsive to our staff. And this has gone on for some time where I know that, that commissioners have voiced their concerns with regard to the, the operation of the commission office, that we need to have it as soon as possible.
Okay. Anything else on this particular item?
Yes, sir.
So unless I hear differently, we're going to, yes. Oh, okay. You gotta like, you know, do your hand or something. I, I thought I was looking at your way. Yes.
I would just like to express my support for President Paduzzi's comments. As a new commissioner, I'm confused as to the parameters of what staff is able to do. I need support to understand what the constituents want. I need help in communicating with them. I need someone to, to be of assistance and I'm just really unclear, so I would really like us to move this item forward as quickly as possible so that we can all do what we need to, to serve the city.
Okay, so I'm going to continue to, with my instructions to city administrator to get this on a mayor-commission workshop ASAP and then you guys can have the conversation, get some direction. Meanwhile, City Attorney, you'll continue to look for and work with them on how they could have, you know, periodic administrative meetings and what, what's necessary.
Absolutely.
To do that, but meanwhile, we'll try to accommodate you to get this item scheduled so you all can have the conversation sooner rather than later. All right. Anything else on this? Okay.
Is everyone ready for procurement?
Okay. Very good.
Siting, right? So, like everything, procurement is a process, right? We start with the planning and we move on to identifying what is the scope of services that we need, goods, services. We determine, we determine the appropriate method to secure the services, goods or construction. We evaluate and select a vendor to provide that. We award a contract and then the contract is managed and sometimes needs amendment and you start the process through the whole experience. So all contracts for the procurement of supplies, services and constructions, they're done with a method that's established in our procurement code. The purpose of the procurement code is to ensure integrity in the procurement process, to maximize open competition, to promote fair treatment of all vendors and contractors and to promote the public confidence in the processes that we implement. Not only is there a section of our code of ordinances that adopts specific procurement processes, but the charter also requires that we put those processes in place. State statutes, state statutes also govern some of the procurements that are done by governmental entities, specifically those that are deemed what we call CCNA, they're engineering, land, architecture, specialized engineering-type services. The code itself identifies specific types of contracts that require your approval. One such contract are for the construction of buildings and structures with the exception of the utilities, ah, excuse me, tongue-tied, the utility systems. All of the contracts for insurance, you see them come through annually, it's because the code requires that they come to you. If there is a process that's followed that is still fair, provides for fair and open competition, but doesn't specifically meet the requirements of the enumerated processes set out in your code, those contracts will come to you for approval. If a procurement process was initiated prior to the availability of funds, i.e. we're waiting for the award of grant funds, those contracts will come for you, come to you for approval. And if it's required by a state statute or city code to come to you for approval, those items will come also. So where does the authority to procure come from? It really comes from your approval of the budget detail. If there is a budget detail for an item, that is equal to the authority for the department to procure that service or contract contained within the budget detail. The commission also has to approve if a procurement contract exceeds the budget amount by more than $10,000, it will come to you for approval. The procurement process to be initiated prior to the availability of funds, again, it's if you're waiting for the grant funding, that will come to you. And if there is a design change to something that had been previously approved, requiring the face of the city, that will come to you as well. We're going to talk about the cone of silence. The whole purpose of the cone of silence is so that the process stays pure, that the selections are made in an open meeting and that those discussions are held in the open meeting and that no individual proposer has an unfair advantage over the other. So there is absolutely no attempt to influence the procurement process that's permitted. The contractors, their vendors, anyone representing them or acting on their behalf may not contact the mayor or any of the commissioners or any of the other city staff except for the procurement official who is assigned to the solicitation during the procurement process Lobbying is prohibited. All of the, all of the RFPs, ITNs, request for qualifications, the procurement documents all contained with them, in addition to the code having the requirements, those solicitations also indicate and tell those who are proposing that there is absolutely no lobbying permitted. And it is, it's a reason to disqualify those who violate the provisions as well. So your cone of silence, what we call the, the no lobbying time period, is from the time that the solicitation is advertised until the contract is executed, the procurement is otherwise terminated.
Commissioner Shoff has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. As to the last section, how do we communicate to anyone applying for these procurement opportunities, namely during that section of waiting on a contract to be executed? Because, for example, the anchor site, we reviewed anchor site presentations about two and a half years ago from this dais, there was the major presentation of the top five, but we didn't get into a contract until a few months ago. And so I think that portion of time between presentation, everyone has presented, this body selects the top contender, and so then between that time and a time of a contract executed, I think that's when, when maybe applicants might lose track of still being under that cone of silence. So when we communicate out the terms of the cone of silence to applicants, do we just do it once during the application process? Or after they've done presentations, do we send them a reminder and let them know, you're still under cone of silence? Do we let them know when a contract has been executed so that they know that the, the deal has been done and they are completely out of the running? Or how do we communicate that over to eliminate some of that confusion?
I know for a fact that it's in the solicitation documents. I don't know for a fact whether or not the procurement staff sends out another notice to remember that the cone of silence stays in place until the contract is awarded, but I certainly can recommend that if it's not a current practice being done. The notice of intent to award goes out to all of the proposers when the intent to award the contract is done. Certainly that would be a good opportunity to remind them that, that we are in negotiations and that should something fall apart, that, that the selection could change and that the cone of silence remains in place until the contract is executed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. So we're going to go, move on to quasi-judicial actions and, and I have a visual here for you to show you, you know, illustratively, that quasi-judicial is much like a judicial action or a court action and that's why it's called quasi-judicial. You have someone presiding, i.e. the judge or the mayor. You have someone taking down the entire meeting through either a court reporter, in our instance, the city clerk. You have folks who come in and present evidence. You have the commission or the jury who are the triers of fact, who are going to listen to the evidence and apply the evidence to the law and make a decision. So that's why we refer to the actions that are taken when you're applying law and evidence to grant or deny a particular application, a quasi-judicial action. So your actions come in two forms, they're either legislative or quasi-judicial or judicial, the difference being legislative, you are actually creating the policy and when you're sitting in your judicial capacity, you're applying that policy to the application that's before you based on the evidence that you hear. So what, what are the type of hearings that you hear that are quasi-judicial? Most of your land use matters are going to be quasi-judicial because we have the zoning code and in the code you have numerous guidelines or standards that you apply to a particular application to decide whether or not that application should be granted. For instance, variances, a conditional use permit, your site plan approvals, PDs, zoning code changes, you're looking at your comprehensive plan. When you make your motion, you say, yes, it complies with the standards set forth in section 9432 and it complies with the comprehensive plan policy 1.1.3. So what you're doing is you're listening to the evidence, you're looking at the standard and you're saying, yes, that evidence that was presented meets the requirements of these code, code sections that are applicable to the application before you. Also, you have appeals and courts are kind of thrown up in the air as to whether or not they're purely appeals or they're a form of quasi-judicial. And I say that because like in your historic preservation, and I know you had one recently, appeal, you sit in what's called de novo, meaning you listen to all of the evidence anew. So in that context, you are going to apply the same quasi-judicial principles, you're going to have your set of standards from the Secretary of Interior Standards and your other applicable historic code provisions that you are applying to, the evidence that's presented to decide whether or not that application should be granted or denied. Also bid protests come to you for, we were just talking about the procurement code, but you sit as the appellate body for an appeal or a bid protest as well. There may be some others, but those are just two examples. So what types of things can you do? Generally speaking, when you sit in quasi-judicial, all ex parte communications are communications that happen outside of a publicly noticed meeting, any communication with anybody that's not here in front of you while you're making a decision is an ex parte communication. Generally, there's a presumption that those kind of communications are biased and prejudiced, the triers of fact. But in the statute, it creates an exception and it says in the statute that if you as a governing body allow for these ex parte communications through a resolution, then they're okay. So we've done that. We have a resolution that says you can have ex parte communications, you can do site visits, you can gather information from staff and from others. And we do that. But in order to do that, the statute also requires that full disclosure is made of those outside of this area, the communications that occur outside of your commission chambers at the time that you're making a decision. That's communications, any communications, whether they're oral or written, that's why we make a disclosure. Who, who are they from? What was the type of information that was conveyed and whether or not the information would prejudice your decision? And why do you say those things? It's so that the applicant or the person who's presenting to you has an opportunity to know what it is you're thinking about and that they can provide evidence contrary to what you've already heard. So that's why you make full disclosure, so they have an opportunity to respond. So there are three legal requirements for the actions that you take on an application to allow it to withstand judicial scrutiny. Procedural due process, which means that you provide proper notice and an opportunity to be heard. It's not, it's actually reasonable notice is the term they use. Reasonable is undefined, but it's at least 24 hours and oftentimes more. The essential requirements of law have to be met. That means that the law that's applicable to the application in front of you has been followed, whether it's the comprehensive plan, a zoning code provision, ordinances that are applicable to the application, maybe the building code, whatever laws are applicable to what it is you're deciding to grant or deny, you have to apply that law and no other law. And then finally, you have to have substantial competent evidence. What's that? What evidence is necessary to meet the prong? What evidence is necessary to meet the prongs of the law that you're applying? It's evidence that a reasonable person would rely on to support a specific fact. That's what the law tells us it is. But I'm going to share with you some examples of things, and you can decide for yourself as I go through. Would I consider this substantial competent evidence or not? I'm not going to call on you, but take note, and then I'll let you know as we go through them whether they were or they weren't in the eyes of the law. So, you have recommendations or reports of city's professional staff? Substantial competent evidence or no? Expert testimony or reports from consultants? Agreements of all surrounding businesses that the zoning code should be changed? Testimony of members from the public with technical training, education, or expertise on an issue related to the application? Signatures of 100 neighbors within 500 feet stating, I oppose this project? Testimony of neighbors based on their personal observations, which includes specific facts regarding the property and the standards that are being applied? So, hopefully, you've made little mental notes, and I'll go through. Yes. Recommendations and reports from city's professional staff is substantial competent evidence? Expert testimony and reports of consultants are substantial competent evidence? Agreements of your surrounding business owners to change the code, not substantial competent evidence? Testimony of folks with technical knowledge is competent substantial evidence? A petition that we don't like it or we're opposed is not substantial competent evidence? Testimony of your neighbors that have specific facts applicable to what it is you're applying is substantial competent evidence? You have letters from a large number of residents of the affected neighborhood without specific facts relating to objections? You have letters from neighborhood associations, condominium associations, homeowners association, or neighbors that say they have no objection to a variance? You have an argument of an attorney for the applicant? And a residence who prepared a pictorial board with photographs taken on the street showing the character of the properties on the street for the applicant's property application, and let's say for a historic property that's being requested for some window changes? So, no. Letters from a large number of residents without specific facts as to why the objections don't meet a particular standard is not substantial competent evidence? Doesn't matter where the letters come from. They're not substantial competent evidence without the specific facts that are necessary to decide whether or not the application should be granted. Arguments by lawyers are not evidence unless they're sworn and they're testifying as to something. They're just argument. And a residence complaint with some specific facts that are applicable to a standard would be substantial competent evidence. And I want to pause there for a minute and see if anyone has any questions about substantial competent evidence.
Questions on this point? Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you. Just a question to your third bullet point of the argument by an attorney for the applicant, unless they're sworn and giving testimony. Aren't the attorneys that are here presenting in front of us sworn and giving testimony?
They, it depends. They really shouldn't be. If, let's say for the sake of discussion, they actually are presenting the architect's information, they're not sworn. It's the architect's information that they're showing to you and they're providing argument. But there is case law out there that says if it's just sure argument, if, if I'm standing up here giving you argument why you should grant my application, that is not evidence. It's the evidence itself that is the evidence.
So, it has to be fact-based testimony, not just bullet points of here's why?
Correct. And, and you can look at their bullet points. And if their bullet points are, you know, it was appraised at $500,000 and you have the appraisal that's supported by facts, that's fine. But it's just argument. It's argument why it should be granted, but it's not the basis for granting a loan by itself.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I have a question on the fourth bullet on the previous slide. The testimony of a member of the public with technical training, how would we determine that, or is it just based on them telling?
Sometimes they'll say. You'll have somebody come up and say, I'm a planner. I've lived in the city for 50 years. This property is right next to my house. We have five-story, or five-story, five-story apartment buildings along the street. Here is a picture. If you put this 15-story building in the middle of it, it ruins the character of the property. And one of your standards is the, the character of the street view of the property for historic preservation.
And so, in that example?
So, that, that is evidence that you can consider because they have personal knowledge. They brought you support, and it is applicable to one of the standards you're applying.
Okay. And I guess that that does?
What weight you give it? I'm sorry, Commissioner. What weight you give it is, is your decision, though.
I'm sorry, what?
The weight that you give the testimony compared to others.
Okay. And I feel like that example you gave was more towards the last bullet on there about residents who have personal observations. But you did state, when you were commenting as that resident, the very first thing was he said, or she said, I'm a planner. And that was my question, is more about the technical training. So, is, is them just saying, I'm a planner?
You don't have to be a planner. I mean, that's, again, it goes to weight. If, if, if a planner may have more weight because it's a planning-type item than a residential unit owner. But if they're both giving you evidence that is applicable to a particular issue, then let's say height, and whether or not it fits on the street, you don't need to be a planner to know.
I understand that. I guess if I could clarify my original question? My original question was, what evidence do we need that, whether they're, let's say they're not a resident, they're not a neighbor in that area, and they're testifying as, as an expert? Them just saying, I'm a planner, is sufficient? Or do we have to have them provide us something? That was just my question.
You can ask for additional qualifications. And you are the trier of fact, so you are giving weight or credibility to particular testimony. So, if you don't believe somebody is or isn't what they say they are and they don't provide you enough credentials, that's something that you will consider when you decide how much weight to give that particular testimony. But there's no specific requirement as to what they provide you. They can say they're an expert, and you can decide they're not, based on what they've presented.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Proceed.
So, after you've taken all of the testimony and heard all of the evidence, you make findings of fact to support your decision by substantial incompetent evidence? You're going to apply the law to the facts that you heard. You're going to render a decision, and the decision will be in writing, and it's considered final agency action. That's either if we grant or deny, there will be a decision that's rendered so that the applicant has the ability to appeal. Appeals in these matters run from the filing of the decision with the clerk. And with that, I am done with quasi judicial. Are there any other questions?
Okay. Very good.
I turn it over to Fay Johnson.
Thank you. Good morning. Mayor, members of the Commission, Fay Johnson, City Administrator. I think I just dove right into answering questions and did not extend good morning greetings. So, I'm going to handle this section of the presentation related to the budget, which is a matter that we are actually engaged in right now. And I want to just start by pointing out that the budget, I sort of look at it, you know, in, in two different frameworks. The first part of the budget is really, there is really no prescriptive timeline on how that front-end part of the budget is actually done. That really is discretionary, wherein the last part of the budget is really regulated by the trim notice that the property appraiser sets forth. So, when we look at our particular budget process, we are somewhat still in transition, given the fact that it's been now overseen as delegated by the mayor to me as the city administrator. And with me being fairly new here to the city in terms of my second tour of duty, the budget process is in transition as we are carving it out. Last year was an anomaly in that we had the pandemic, so the board had just a series of work sessions because we were trying to keep pace of the freefall revenue situation that we were in. And we were trying to keep the board apprised of how the revenues was changing almost on a daily basis. And that really affected how we bought the work sessions to the board and the different proposers. If you all will recall, we went through just a series of iterations of the budget because the numbers were changing so quickly in terms of the revenue dropping. We don't anticipate, well, let me just retract that. We are not in a situation this year that we were in last year. So, we're not in a revenue freefall. We won't have the nine or 10 work sessions updating the numbers and what have you. So, we're at a point of stabilizing in terms of the revenue numbers. And it's going to be a much more streamlined process this year as opposed to last year. So, in terms of the budget process, make sure, okay, I got that backwards. I'll just put all of these on here. So, as I indicated, you know, the, the city is statutorily obligated to adopt a balanced budget each year. From a layman's standpoint, we always couch it in terms of our expenditures have to meet our revenues. That is, in layman's terms, what a balanced budget means. We cannot overspend if we don't have revenue. Our fiscal year is October 1st to September 30th, as is known. Our city charter requires that the adoption of the budget be by resolution. And again, we may not expend or contract for expenditures unless it is pursuant to the approved budget. So, once the board adopts the budget, under the mayor's direction and delegated authority to me as the city administrator, we watch the department's expenditure of their budgets. Finance is very engaged with departments on a monthly or quarterly basis, monitoring the expenses and trying to stay on top of any anomalies that we see in terms of trends, if they're overspending, how that's going to be dealt with throughout the fiscal year. Some expenses may come in at the early part of the fiscal year, and then they taper off. So, if there's a trend where expenses are really trending up, if there's some rational explanation for that, we don't get in a state of panic. The millage rate, as is known, is set by resolution. The statute requires that the city hold budget hearings. So, again, this part of the budget preparation process is where it is pretty much discretionary. There is no policy or statute that kind of articulates the dates by which you have to load up your budget. That really is unique to your organization. But for this year, we're loading up the budget. We loaded it up in March. We're actually in May already. But this is the front end of the process that the board really does not get involved in. It's more for the departments. They load up their budget requests. We run the base budget reports. The departments receive training on inputting their tentative budget. And we also allow them to submit any budget issue requests. But prior to actually loading up the budget, I set budget guidelines in conjunction or in coordination with finance. And it provides guidance to the departments on what their requested budgets are to come in. It sets targets. For example, for this year, departments, if they were non-public safety departments, they were required to bring their budget requests in at a 5% reduction from the adopted FY21 budget. And that budget guidance was given to departments with anticipation that we were not quite out of the woods in terms of our revenues being at the peak that they were before the pandemic and that we were going to have some budget challenges. So, we made allowances for that as part of the budget guidance that was provided to departments. And then it set forth a schedule for which they had to upload their budgets when we would have the budget reviews with the budget manager as well as with the city administrator. So, we are in May now. The departments will have a meeting with the budget manager to talk about their budget. If there's anything unique about their budget that the budget manager needs to get more up to speed on, to get a better understanding, so that she would be in a position to then sit with me prior to my budget reviews with the departments. So, if we move on to June, June 1st, we will get the preliminary values from the property appraiser, which is the set date. And the board had an update from our property appraiser, Dorothy Jacks, here a couple of meetings back, and she gave us an outlook on what she anticipated our values to be. The second week of June, I will begin holding budget reviews with the departments, looking specifically at how they met the 5% budget reduction, what, if any, service impacts there will be related to that reduction, how it will affect their personnel. Some departments, I anticipate, will be able to meet their budget reduction target through cutting out material services, whereas other departments, it may end up hitting personnel. But that will be their opportunity to present the impact of the budget guidelines that they had to adhere to, to me. And I will look at all of that at the end of the day. And then we'll have a picture of where we are because all of the expenses would be loaded up. We'll have a very firm revenue projection, and we'll know whether or not we have a variance between our operating revenue and our operating expenses. Best-case scenario is that we would have the revenue slightly outpacing the expenditures. However, given that we have had a historical imbalance with our operating expenses outpacing our operating revenue, we have to let the dust settle to see where we'll end up. And depending where we end up, in consultation with the mayor, I will go back to departments with further direction or not. If we're in a good place in terms of revenues and expenses balancing, then we'll just move forward and start preparing to have work sessions with the commission. So, when we look at, as we get to July, July 1st is that magic date where we get the final property values from the property appraiser. We will get the numbers in terms of our revenue sharing from the state, and then we will begin planning budget hearings. And this is the regulated part of the budget schedule. So, July 12th is, if you had an opportunity to look at the budget schedule, that is the date where we will have the special commission meeting to set the not-to-exceed millage rate. And as the board is aware, you set the not-to-exceed millage rate. However, you do, as a board, have the discretion to lower that millage rate, but you cannot exceed it once you set that not-to-exceed millage rate. On the 12th, we will have a presentation of the Preliminary Fire Assessment Rate Resolution and the Chronic Nuisant Assessment. Moving on through July, we're planning to have the first major budget work session with the board. I would just put a pause there in that based on how the numbers look after all of the budgets are loaded up in the budget reviews. If it looks like we're going to be in a major situation with a gap between expenses and revenues, we probably will have a work session with the board before we get to July 19th so that the board can start understanding what the situation looks like as we look to balance. And this relates to the general fund budget. That's the one where we always have the biggest challenges because that's where we have the majority of the city operations. because that's where we have the majority of the city operations funded out of the general fund and that's affected more by what's happening with the pandemic and revenue sharing. And certainly, a major portion of that is how the property values come in this year. So if that situation looked like it's going to be in dire straits, we will have budget work sessions with the commission prior to July 19th. We have dialed into optional meetings with the community to give them an overview of our budget for FY22 and allow any comments or input from the commission. Last year, because of the pandemic, was the first year we had community Zoom budget meetings. And those meetings seemed to have worked very well. The staff really felt that we had a broader range of participation by having the Zoom meetings and they would like to continue with Zoom meetings this year. So that's dialed in. The August 7th, the Mayor Commission Budget Workshop is planned, which will also include a presentation on the CIP as well. And then we get, really get down, when we get into August, that's where the board will then have the various required, statutory required budget hearings. You'll have the preliminary budget presentation on August 23rd. And then on August 23rd as well, we will have the final fire assessment rate resolution and chronic nuisance assessments. And then we get to September, we will be looking at having that first public hearing on the adoption of the tentative budget based in setting the millet rate. Based on input from the commission or discussion, we may have to go back and fine tune some numbers or make some adjustments. And then we will bring back the final public hearing for adoption of the final budget at your September 23rd final public hearing. And then the budget will go into effect October 1st of 2021, which would be your FY22 budget. It has FY2021, but it will be FY2022 budget that will go into effect. And I'll pause here, Mayor, for questions or discussion from the board.
Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator Johnson. Just one question on the scheduling. I certainly appreciate the community input meetings. I think that those are really important to get a lot of feedback from the community. If we could make sure that one of them was outside working hours so that it was an evening or something that, that anyone who is working a 8 to 5, 9 to 5 could have that option and then anyone that works, those alternate schedules can certainly attend either the 9:00 AM or the 2:00 PM, either in addition to or instead of, that would be my request.
Well, we'll take that into consideration, yes.
Question, really for the commissioners. How do you feel about the Zoom community meetings as opposed to the in-person ones? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I attended them before they were Zoom and on the Zoom and it seemed like there was a better participation on the Zoom meetings that people could attend them maybe while they were cooking dinner as well or doing something else. So I think that they went well. I do agree with Commissioner Shof because typically in the past, they were held after hours. I think that that would be helpful.
Okay. Any other observations on Zoom? Okay.
I did have another question.
Absolutely. Yes, Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Fox.
Thank you Administrator Johnson. I know that towards the end of the budget process, we create, which I love, that the finance department creates this little booklet and it's kind of a summary of the budget. And it's so user-friendly. I've had residents ask for that. I realize that that's not usually done, I think until later, like maybe even after it's adopted. I'm not sure of the timing of that. Is there something that maybe isn't time-consuming that could be provided to residents in addition to an in-person or it's a Zoom meeting? Just something that they could read to consume the same data?
I really would have to confer with finance on what could be prepared. Certainly, if we can meet that request, we would love to do that. But you know, the budget is just such, you know, a very demanding time. We're trying to get it loaded up and meeting all of the requirements. So I need to confer with finance. I don't want to commit to something that they're not able to do. But certainly, if it can be done, we will work to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question about the money that was coming in from the federal government. I think it was around 25 million. But the last time we had spoken about it, I think that there was some discussion that we didn't know all the parameters for what it could be used for and how it can be applied. So I was just curious if we had more information about that, if it would be applied to the, going forward, if there were many years that it had to be applied over or something like that? Or if we knew where we could use it to just get ahead of the budget for the upcoming year?
I'll let the city attorney speak to whether or not we have actually gotten the guidance from the treasury in. As of Friday, we had not. We had anticipated getting the guidance sometime back. I think the, initially, it was indicated that within so many days after it was approved, that the guidance would be sent down to municipalities. But be it as it may, the 25.3 million, there are four broad categories by which you can use the funding. What we have been informed of is that the funds would be distributed in two tranches. So we anticipate getting the first tranche and that would be half of the funds this year and then the balance next year. The entire 25.3 million has to be expended by 2024. The various categories, the four uses of it, what we have to keep in mind is that this is going to be one-time funding. So as we look at our budget process, given that we budget on an annual basis, we would not typically look to include one-time funding to budget your ongoing expenditures. So you will not see where we would take, for example, one of the categories is where you can reimburse the organization or municipality for lost revenue. In our case, looking back at the pandemic effect on our revenue, it was about 7 million in the general fund. We would be looking at that 7 million and bringing forward a proposal on how we would utilize it. But we would not be looking to dial that into salary increases, if you will, because that's one-time money and we don't want to build the ongoing budget on one-time money because you won't be able to replenish it. So again, there's a category for infrastructure and those are one-time projects. We would be looking at developing a list of recommendations to work session with the board and then get direction on the recommendations of how to use that portion of it. So that's how you would see it tied into the budget, but more than likely, you're going to see it tied into our part of the budget that relates to one-time funding, not your operating budget. But I'll let the city attorney speak to whether or not we've gotten anything here this morning on when we expect to receive it. I know we are set up in terms of the accounts and we're ready to receive it, but as of Friday, we had not received the specific guidance.
This is, this is correct. As of Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we had not yet received the guidance. I had been told late Friday, Friday afternoon by our lobbyists that the Treasury Department was expected to release the guidance documents either Friday or Monday, which is today. So I will continue to look for those guidance documents. We should have them today if their information is correct.
And I, let me just add, let me underscore what City Administrator Johnson said. With respect to that monies, we are going to have a work session with the commission. So we will be presented with the categories of spending possibilities and be able to weigh in on proposed uses of those funds. So that we will be totally transparent, you know, as to what we're thinking. Solicit your thoughts, your ideas, your input. So stay tuned. But you know, you will be part of that conversation, a very integral part of that conversation. That's how those monies will be expended. Commissioner Shof?
Thank you. To follow up on Commissioner Lambert's comments, I believe we called the booklet back, back, when I first got on the commission, it was called the Budget in Brief. So I don't know if that's the same document that's listed under your September 7th deadline. That was the summary of historical data as compared to now. When it first came on the commission, when we did that exercise, that booklet was provided during the community input sessions. And it was extremely helpful to understand because it also breaks down a lot of things that we talk about here in commission sessions about how property taxes basically fund your, your first responder safety needs of the city. And it helps put in perspective for citizens the amount of tax dollars that cover the services that they get. So they get a lot more services than their property tax dollars provide, that it also includes intergovernmental and other taxing agencies to be able to get the revenues into the city. So traditionally, when that booklet was provided, it was at the beginning of the community input sessions and I think provided a good level set for the community about expectations, where our funding was coming from and the kinds of expenses that it could cover. Because a lot of times what would happen in the community sessions, neighbors would come in thinking they were going to talk about the infrastructure projects and the parks projects and big capital projects. And I think that booklet really helped to put in perspective for them, the city departments that we were talking about and that it was operational expenses versus capital expenses. I think an additional piece of information it provided was the reserves and the account on reserve status to kind of give like a one-stop shop city financial snapshot to our residents. So I have some previous iterations of that Administrator that I'll provide to you as well. And so hopefully, that I'll be able to put it into context, also understanding it's a very complicated process and a very busy time for finance.
Thank you for that clarification. And I will tell you, Commissioner Shof, I am very familiar with budgets in brief and have prepared them, you know, in my other life at other municipalities. Just keep in mind that last year was just a year like no other. So trying to put together budget in brief based on what our revenue picture was when revenues were in a freefall, it just made it very challenging. Again, I just don't want to commit, you know, I actually, maybe I misunderstood Commissioner Lambert's question. I thought she was asking for some information in addition to the budget in brief. But if it's the budget in brief and confer with finance, if they are prepared and on schedule to prepare that in time for the community meetings, by all means. You know, we will, hopefully, this is the year that we will be back on track because again, last year was just a year that none of us could have anticipated, you know, we would find ourselves in.
Let's see if we can prioritize that, please.
Will do.
I mean, I know you got to talk to finance, but let's just see if we can make that happen for the commissioners. Anything else? Okay, you want to proceed, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to actually ask the city attorney to come to the other podium because this is a statutory change and the board may have questions related to the new law.
And I'm not, I'm not going to go in great detail, but this again is another one of those things that we talked about where the legislature creates a statute that interferes with local government's ability to decide what its future should be based on what its needs are. So what the legislature did in one of its bills was allow for this appeal process wherein a state attorney or any individual commissioner can appeal a budget if the budget cuts in any way the police portion of the budget. That appeal would go to the governor and then ultimately to the legislature to decide whether or not the commission can cut that budget or it should be modified. So that really, in a nutshell, that was just to give you a heads up of this new process and what's out there for local governments in the future.
Any questions on that? Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Attorney. I know this portion was tied to the anti-rioting legislation that passed too and was heavily influenced by the governor's office. Just curious if we're talking to our representation at the state level to see what the future of this might hold. Is there any potential that this might change or now that's gone through the governor's office?
It's, it's signed. It's law and it's in effect now. So it went on a fast track and to change it is like to change any legislation. Somebody's got to bring another bill to repeal or otherwise modify it in a future legislative session.
So anticipate that we'll just be paying attention to see where, where this is going.
Right.
Thanks.
Well, I think the good news is I don't anticipate we'll be cutting the police budget this season. So this is triggered by a cut in the budget from the preseason.
In fact, for police and fire, the budget guidance that was given to them was that their base budget was to be flat plus the 5% step pay and any obligated increases. They were not required to bring in a reduction.
So, and it's only budget cuts, it's only cuts in those budgets that trigger this?
Correct. To the police budget only. They're trying to mirror what they do for sheriff's offices in essence.
All right, Commissioner Shof.
Thank you. And certainly, I think my, my main concern over this is the erosion further of home rule, of course. But looking into the future now, you know, we have some situations in front of us where we're, you know, I think actively working to bring our police force up into market rate. And the more we increase that budget year over year, it's kind of a no clawback and not, not anticipating that that's what I want, of course, in the future. But just looking to see how this may possibly, you know, hinder police departments across municipalities. So, you know, just kind of being mindful of, of where this is going and what kind of precedent it sets and keeping the temperature. I mean, I realize it's beyond our control here and that's part of the issue.
Well, you know, we, along with other municipalities, the Florida legal cities and other groups fought this very hard in the legislative process. But we just were not successful in defeating it. So it's unfortunate, but it is what it is unfortunately. Okay. Anything else on this? Any other questions? All right.
Just briefly, I'm going to review the agenda process and hopefully the board, you know, has a pretty good understanding, you know, of the agenda process. But as is indicated, the mayor sets the agenda. This is an administrative part of the process. We use Lotus Notes to input the agenda. When it is distributed, there is a hyperlink that will take you to the resolution or ordinances and any contracts or attachments that are with the agenda cover memorandum. We do, as a matter of course, have agenda review the Thursday before the city commission meeting and that provides the board an opportunity to ask specific questions on agenda items. As part of your commission meetings, we do have the commission rules of procedure and the mayor has been taking an opportunity to kind of review those at the beginning of the meetings. If an item requires a sale or lease of city property, there's a declaration of the surplus and then the election method by which that property would be disposed and it requires a four-fifth vote of the commission for approval. As it relates to special commission meetings, one may be called by the mayor or by two commission members to discuss only the specific item on the agenda. And again, we do have commission work sessions. The mayor has mentioned the work session a couple of times relative to some items you want brought forward. Those as delegated by the mayor are coordinated through me as the city administrator in the work sessions or for discussion purposes and direction. No form of action is taken at the work sessions.
Administrator Johnson, we do have a question or comment from Commissioner Shof.
Yes.
Thank you Administrator. I just had a question on the special commission meetings, whether called by the mayor or to commission members. Is there a requirement for a timeframe of notice for those, that they have to be noticed within a specific timeframe? Or could I, along with another commissioner on the dais, decide that a special commission meeting could be called this afternoon or tomorrow?
There's, there's no specific time listed in our code, but you know, like all public meetings, you have to have reasonable notice. And reasonable notice is generally for the public, but also you need reasonable notice for the staff who need to prepare for that meeting to be noticed. noticed as well. If you're talking about a resolution or an ordinance, all resolutions and ordinances have to be reviewed by my office for legal sufficiency, so reasonable notice would be noticed, number one, to your staff to make sure that they're prepared to do what it is you need to do, and also, number two, to make sure we comply with the notice provisions for the sunshine law.
So there's no specific definition of reasonable notice?
There is not a specific, there is a case that indicates that 24 hours is sufficient under certain circumstances, obviously, emergency meetings are different, so there's a different notice provision if it's an emergency. Generally speaking, there's some direction from, I want to say it's the Attorney General's office, that a reasonable amount of time, although not binding, would be a five-day notice period, but the courts look at it as, was it reasonable based on the circumstances, the amount of time that you gave to the public to be able to attend and participate at the meeting.
And as it pertains to emergency meetings, those would be not obviously defined either, so it would be up to interpretation of what an emergency meeting is. I mean, obviously, I think there are things that everyone can agree on, hurricane status of pending, you know, action needed, but there are other things that I think may be constituted as an emergency to one and not to another.
We would need to look at that on a case-by-case basis to decide upfront if we thought that reasonable notice was met, so that all of you would be complying with the sunshine law in scheduling that meeting.
Okay, and then just secondarily to that, is it, the two commission members, I guess, is the portion of this, that logically have a hard time kind of figuring why we would have a meeting called by two commissioners, as it would require three commissioners to pass any measure?
It's in your charter.
Okay, so it's just by definition? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay.
Kimberly, you want to stay put? We're on the last section of the onboarding. Just want to, you know, just kind of bring to the board's attention the reinstitution of neighborhood meetings. You know, that's a big part of how the city engages with our residents. The mayor's goal is to reinstitute the meetings in early 2022. As it relates to police and code enforcement, Chief Adderley is looking at having individual community meetings in the various geographic sections of the city, and so if there is some input that the board has in terms of what you would like to see future neighborhood meetings look like, you can forward that input to me, and I will have a follow-up discussion with the mayor as we start designing how the reinstitution of neighborhood meetings will roll out.
Commissioners, I really do want to, I am giving serious thought to reconstituting those meetings, not, since I was a commissioner, who's never really happy with the format, they tended to turn into grape sessions. Also, given the fact that the police and now code under the police will be having their own meetings in the various districts, I think there's, and if you recall, in those neighborhood meetings, that was a significant portion of the agenda, so we're going to be looking at making those meetings more relevant and hopefully get better turnout. But I am happy to hear from you, these are your neighborhoods, your districts, as to what you think might work, and would like to get your ideas as well, but I have some pretty specific ideas as to direction would you like that. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I really appreciate your thoughtful consideration of how we re-implement these community meetings, and, you know, I would have to say that 80% of the issues that I respond to in the neighborhoods could have been remedied by more communication with them, and I think that this is one of the tools that we have to get that information to them. You know, I was also thinking about Commissioner Shoff's comment about the budget, and, you know, I think that at these neighborhood meetings, there could be more discussion about things that are coming up on the budget items, those capital improvement programs, the parks, bond update, and things like that, and so I am so excited to see these coming back. One of my, probably my number-one suggestion for these meetings is that they be held in the neighborhood themselves, whether it's at one of the park locations or our community centers, I think we would get a lot more participation if it were, if we were able to do that, and I think that if these meetings, if we really looked at the content of these meetings, and if police and code were, you know, separate meetings, they might not need, these meetings might not need to be as frequent, and so that may help offset if we're going out into the community.
What about Zoom formats for these meetings? What are your thoughts on that? Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, to that point, I think you can probably have a hybrid meeting, it's absolutely correct that much of the meetings center around police and code enforcement, and if that's a regular drumbeat, especially, you know, speaking from a north-end perspective, you know, I think that is the place where a lot of people have issues, and I've heard requests at various meetings, I've been in a CRA advisory board meeting, and I've had a resident say, hey, we used to get these reports on crime and code, can we get those same reports? You know, so the information has been needed in the neighborhood, and I think, to your point, could be distributed in a different forum to get things into a different setup so that they're productive and moving forward, I think is really great. Even to now, if meetings could be just a one-way communication before 2022, I think the neighbors would just appreciate hearing what's happening. To Commissioner Lambert's point, having them happen within the neighborhood and alternate, especially north-end perspective, east and west of Broadway, making sure that we cover all the neighborhoods and bring those things to them. One of the things that may be helpful to create that structure is to give the meetings a theme, you know, this time we're going to discuss housing, next time code enforcement, Airbnbs, you know, come up with those topics of agendas and just, you know, we're never going to cover everything that's an issue in the neighborhood all at once, but to just have those constant follow-ups of capital projects happening in your neighborhood, and, you know, I think those would be useful topics, whether they're delivered via Zoom or in person, or some hybrid of the two of them. Understanding, Mayor, you have limited time, staff has limited time, if it's even just that one-way communication coupled with the two-way communication the next time, or some feedback mechanism.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? And please, don't hesitate to reach out to my office or even Ms. Johnson if you have other thoughts as to how we can restructure those meetings, I would like to hear them. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, and I think one of the photos in here, it was the downtown and south-end neighborhoods. I just thought that that was a, I wasn't sure why those two neighborhoods were combined, and so just that might be something we look at as well, is, you know, they have very different issues in those two districts.
Okay. Did staff take note of that? Okay. Anything else?
We got it.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, I think the commission has asked questions as we've moved through the different areas, but if there are no other questions, this concludes the onboarding presentations.
All right, and again, commissioners, as we go through the year doing the business of the people, if any of these items, or you have questions about any of these issues we've covered today, I know we kind of went through it relatively quickly, do not hesitate to let Administrator Johnson know that maybe you need a brusher, or refresher, or another session to deal with X, please, we're trying to, and it's my intent, to try to enable you as much as possible to do your job the best you can, and so whatever information you need to help you do that, please let us know. We want to give you the tools that you need to represent your, our citizens, the citizens of West Palm Beach as best as possible, so don't hesitate if there's something else that you need to hear from us on. All right, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to our city attorney and city administrator, and to you, Mayor, for hosting this first annual training, I think it's fabulous, I think that, you know, I appreciate that it was open to all of us and not just our new commissioner, because I think that clearly, even commissioners that have been on for a few years have some questions that I might not have had my first year, so thank you for that, and just as a follow-up, Mayor, I know that I've talked to Administrator Johnson, I think this is in the works, but I think that this goes hand-in-hand with the strategic planning process that you started. We were right in the middle of it, I think, when COVID hit, and I don't know if we have any update on if we're going to continue with that or when.
We will do something along the lines of strategic planning, I think that is also a very important part, I haven't figured out the timing, we're now in the middle of budget season now, so that's obviously going to take priority, but we will certainly try to, we'll figure something out.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Okay, great job, city attorney, city administrator, fantastic, a lot of thought went into this presentation, and I appreciate all the hard-working effort you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get a parks bond update from Mr. Fauna.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, Armando Fauna, Assistant City Administrator, thanks for hanging in on a long morning, we'll try to make it brief so we can get you through it and get you out of here. As you remember, at March of last year of 2020, the voters overwhelmingly passed the $30 million park bond, I think we had over 70% approval, which unprecedented, I think, in any election, and so we're in the process now implementing the $30 million, and it's really a team effort, we have Parks and Rec, Leah and her staff, and they'll be presenting to you in a minute, engineering Kevin Volbright, who's here, Lorenzo Rivera, who's been hired as our project manager for these projects, of course, our legal team, procurement, and we're going to be hiring a position specifically in procurement, both Lorenzo's position and the procurement position are paid by the park bond, because we need specialized attention on this, because we have a three-year window in order to spend most of the monies, so we have the time, the clock is ticking, and then, of course, our finance team and legal team, so it's a team effort, it's all really important, and we've made some good progress, and Leah is going to begin to present some of that progress that we've made over the past couple of months, and what you can look forward to in the next couple of months. Leah, take over.
Good morning, Leah Rockwell, the Director of Parks and Recreation. So I'm going to try and be as brief as possible, because I know it's been a long morning for you guys, so let me just keep going here. Page down, enter. I don't know why. Okay, so, we're going to go through the project list, smart sheets, the CIP website for the public, projects completed, projects in progress, and then some upcoming projects. So there's going to be some slides that you're really not going to be able to read a lot of the information, but all of this information is on the city's website or will be. So this is a project list and the funds as they were approved for the bond. And then, the city has started with smart sheets, and through our IT department and engineering, we are putting together these smart sheets that are going to be dashboards for all of the projects that we're doing in the city, and it can tell you where we are in the process, whether it started, whether it's in progress, whether it's completed, whether we're behind, so green means we're in a good place, yellow means we're okay, and red means we are behind schedule. So these dashboards are really important for us so that we can see where we're going, and these will also be available to the public on the website to see for each project. Again, you're not going to be able to see this, but this kind of just shows you a Gantt sheet of how much money is being spent on each of the projects and where we are in that spending of the projects. And this is what you'll really see on the website, each project and what it consists of and where they are, and then if you click on where it says Parks Bond, and you find a project that you want to click on, then this is what you'll see. You'll see the individual project, for instance, Howard Park Playground and lighting improvements. So we've started that project, we've gotten some cost estimates for the lighting, and we are starting some of the improvements to the sidewalks and the playgrounds, so all of that stuff is moving forward, and you can see that we're anticipating constructions to start this spring, so we have the prices coming in on the lighting, and we're anticipating completion of this sometime later this summer. So you can see how that's all here, and what district it, what it's, where, what district it is in, as well as the location.
Now, that's on our website now, people can access that?
Yes, it's up, yes, and it will be continuing to be updated, so it'll be ongoing updates, so we're going to try and update it, what we said monthly, right? Is that what we're looking at? Monthly updates?
Monthly updates, yeah.
Because it won't be every day that we're going to go in there, but monthly updates. So some of the projects, and these are portions of larger projects, so for instance, Drea Park has a million dollars, these are just elements within those projects that we've completed. So we've repaired the bridge, and we've completed a lot of the trail connections within the park, just to show you what we've done. In the Bill Moss Paseo, we've enlarged the parking lot configuration, and we've also started working on some other elements in that park. So you guys brought up community engagement at, I believe, one of the last commission meetings, so we've been doing a lot of community engagement. We have been going out to parks, doing intercept engagement, meaning we're there with the clipboard, we're there with designs, we're asking the public who is actually using the parks and using the park elements, what do they like, what don't they like, what are we missing, what do they want more of, what do they want less of. So we have had some of these intercept meetings at our playgrounds, and if you can see here the QR codes on these flyers, they could click on it, and there's a survey that they can fill out from that flyer itself, and then we get that survey with the information on it. So if you can't actually be at the park, you can also click on this and give us your So, for instance, the South Olive Park Playground design, we had various input that created various designs, which we then went out to the public and asked them to tell us which designs they liked the best, so this is the type of thing that we do. And we work not just with the kids, but also with the parents, because then we get to know where they want the benches to go, and how they, where they want to be sitting while their kids are playing and that kind of stuff. We have ordered the Brian Chappelle Playground, which we've picked out a design, or we're in the process of ordering it. Sunset Park Playground, we also did the community meeting, and this is the old design, this is what's new that's going to be placed in there. Alice Mickens, the old playground, and then the new playground, and all of these are from Community Engagement. And then we have Alice Mickens, we are in the process of redoing the basketball court, replacing the basketball stanchions and backboards, as well as all of the fencing. And then we have our bigger projects, like Gaines Park Community Center and expansion and renovation. So Gaines Park is one of our oddities, it has funding both from the penny sales tax and from the bond referendum. So we had several community meetings last year with the community about Gaines Park. The funding for the project from the penny sales tax was not enough money to cover what the community had asked for and what they really deserved. So they were fortunate that the bond referendum passed, so that we had the additional funding to actually bring their vision to a reality. So right now, we're in the process of getting the RFP ready to go out for the architect to finish the design, and once that done, then, once that is done, then we will go out to bid for construction. Phipps Park, we're currently working on the handball courts, repainting them and relighting them. If any of you ever go to Phipps Park, handball is, we are one of the few parks in South Florida that has a handball court, and it is heavily utilized. People from all over come and play handball at Phipps Park, and it's incredible watching them play. And then also, the racquetball courts are being renovated, so new paint, new lighting, new fencing, getting it So new paint, new lighting, new fencing, getting it ready for play. And then I don't know if you've walked through Jose Marti lately. We've started taking down some of the small concrete walls at Jose Marti to open up the park for a fresh slate for the community to design the park. We've met with the community presidents, the DNA president and vice president. And they're going to hold an event where we're going to make some final decisions on the designs for the park. But they're really keen on us putting in some exercise equipment in this park. They're really excited about that idea. So that's where they're heading. And the Jose Marti bust will also be cleaned up and renovated with Sibylle and Art Life. And there's several, all of the other projects are in the planning stages. So of course, you know Curry Park, which I'm sure you'll be getting soon a full presentation on Curry Park. But there have been numerous meetings with the community, as well as with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and CRAB. Yep, go ahead.
I think Curry, you know, Curry is such an important asset. I just wanted to add, and for those, for the public as well, that, you know, the renderings, if you can go back to the renderings, you know, we had $8 million allocated in the park bond for Curry Park, plus about another $1 million that the CRA is providing for the planning purposes. And so we took a lot of the ideas that the community provided to us, the input. And this is kind of like the beginning of the master plan. And we've given that to the CRA Advisory Board, to the Parks Committee as well, and gotten excellent feedback. But, you know, the vision for this park and the way it's coming out really took, got a huge boost recently with an additional about $17 million from the state. So a lot of things that we see on these renderings and a lot of the ideas will now be able to be funded. We're going to have pretty much this fully realized because of this additional funding from the state. So I wanted to point that out because it's important that this is happening. You know, we've had a lot of fits and starts with Curry Park and a lot of promises made and not kept. This time, we're going to do what we said we're going to do with Curry Park and create a fabulous park.
And there's also another grant that we're hoping to hear about soon, which is another $1 million that we're hoping to get from land and water. So keep our fingers crossed. So we've also had a number of visioning meetings for Blum Park with a variety of partners, with the CRA, with Housing Department, West Palm Beach Housing Authority, and of course, Parks and Recreation, to really try and figure out what we can do in the Blum Park Pleasant City area. With the housing there, it kind of blocks the park off from the community center, which we're just finishing the renovations of the community center. And if we can reconfigure the housing such that the park opens up and becomes more usable and feels safer to the public, then we think it'll be a more successful park, especially with the anchor site coming onboard and connecting Northwood, Pleasant City to Curry Park. We really think that it could be something special. And it will be something special. So this just shows you, we had some community meetings out on the basketball court, out on the tennis court, as well as we had some virtual meetings through Zoom. Then we have Drea Park. And one of the things that they're really keen on having is a boundless playground. What is a boundless playground? It's a playground that has, that has no bounds or no boundaries, meaning if you're in a wheelchair, or if you're a senior and you can't use steps, or you're having challenges getting from place to place, that the playground offers opportunities for everyone. So you'll see that there's ramps there, as well as play that is on lower levels, as well as higher levels, so everybody can participate. So Drea Park is very, very excited about putting in a boundless playground, and they want it to be one of their main elements within Drea Park, which is going to be quite something. They've done a lot of research. And this is just, this is just one design that we've gotten from the input. This is not what it's going to look like. This is just what it could be. And then this is a boundless playground that does exist, not in our city, what it looks like. And then another one. So they, there's so many avenues that we can go with, with a boundless playground, but these are some of the options that are out there that they're looking at. And here's another one. Bill Moss Paseo, we are working, you know, we just finished the parking lot to enlarge it, but we're now working on renovating the restrooms and adding an additional parking on Hampton. Hampton is a place where a lot of the parents line up to pick up their kids from Belvedere Elementary. And it gets a bottleneck. And then people who want to use the park can't park because they're all lined up there. So we're formulating or formalizing parking spaces for the park and to alleviate some of that problem with Belvedere Elementary pickup and drop off. And Osprey Park, we are working on the trail. The trail there has been clay for many years. Clay is not really ADA friendly when it gets wet. So we're currently putting in a new trail with concrete. And we'll be redoing a variety of other elements within the park, especially that sign, which really bothers me. Lake Mangonia is getting a total facelift to the restrooms, as well as we're putting in some lighting. And that parking lot, if you haven't been there, that parking lot floods. So we're going to fix the flooding in that parking lot and put up a new park sign. So again, this is a lot of information on one slide. This is our estimated project timeline for all of the projects. So we have been told that we have to spend this bond money within three years. So we are fast-tracking the best that we can, all of the projects, and working simultaneously on them all. We, projects that are not bond-related, but we did want to share with you, is this Howard Park Playground, which was paid for through a regular, from our regular capital improvement funds. Palmetto Playground, which is about to be open. We just have to put the rubber surface down on it. That was paid for from penny sales tax. And what's not on here is Pleasant City Community Center. We're almost ready to open that, hopefully within the next two months. That was also penny sales tax. And we are working on, with our architects, on Howard Park with the penny sales tax for the community center there. And Coleman, yes. Coleman, actually, Penny Sales Tax Project, Coleman Park, the architect and the engineers are, as we're speaking, finishing up that design to hopefully start construction in October. Any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Lambert?
This is so exciting. Thank you so much. And I can tell the excitement of you and your team on this. And, you know, recently getting a new dog and being out and walking in our parks more than I did before just reiterates how important our parks are for our residents. You know, I walk through Phipps Park a lot. And to see the baseball teams playing and the excitement that they have is really wonderful. I wanted to make a few comments. Thank you so much for showing us the CIP page. I'd already been visiting that, and I love that those are updated. You know, I sense a little hesitation with the monthly updates. So if that changes and that's not realistic, if you could let us know because I do know that people visit that site often for the CIP projects. And sometimes I'm, it's shared with me that they're not updated that regularly. So I know that people are very interested in this progress. And I was also curious, well, first of all, I want to say thank you for the community outreach that you've done. That's phenomenal. If, if someone didn't hear about the community input, or they didn't see the flyer, is there somewhere on the website that people can go, if they're interested in, say, Howard Park, that they could go there and they'd see, oh, there's a community meeting coming up in a week? Or I missed that community meeting, there's the link there to?
When we start having more community meetings out in the public, like at the centers or whatnot, there will be, we'll notice it on the website as well, as well as Kathleen and her team will do a lot of Facebook and Twitter, hitting it out there to get everybody to know what's happening. So for instance, with the Howard, with the Howard Park one, we sent it out to five neighborhood associations, and they shared it with other people. And we got back 130 surveys, which is, we would never get that many people coming to a community meeting ever to give us that kind of input. So we were very happy with the results that we got from that, but we will continue to do those types of things. So yes.
That's great. I'm glad to hear you had such a good response. Do you all have some type of criteria that you use to determine which projects that you seek community input for and which ones you don't?
We seek community input for like almost everything. The only thing we wouldn't would be resurfacing a trail. I mean, that we wouldn't, it just needs, it's maintenance, it needs to be repaired. But park elements like playgrounds, fitness equipment, dog park enhancements, community centers, of course, the tennis courts, those will all be community-driven projects.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I was going to piggyback on that question about community engagement. Thank you so much for all that you've done already. I did have another question, just in terms of the surveys that are going out. You know, you mentioned Howard Park specifically. I've gotten several questions about that one. Is it possible that if we do a survey, can we include the, you know, the link in the mayor's newsletter or on the website or something? I know that obviously it's very important for the communities that are immediately surrounding these parks. But thinking about city parks, you know, so many people travel throughout the city every day in different parts of a neighborhood they don't live in. And the parks are used by people that are not necessarily living in those areas. And they also want to contribute to, you know, participate in what will be going on there. So I'm just curious if there's a way that we can send those kind of things more far and wide, if possible.
Certainly, we can add it to, I'll ask the communications team to add those to the mayor's newsletter. Also, just for point of information, because we go out to the park to do intercepts in the park, we are getting information from the people using the park. And we're just not there one day. We're there several days. We might go during the week, we might go on the weekends. We go at various times of the day. So even those people that may not live in the immediate neighborhood but utilize the park, we get information from them as well. So if they're in the park and they're using the park, we definitely engage with them. And then, of course, you know, others who share their information. But we can add that to the mayor's newsletter.
Well, you can ask the mayor if he wants to put it on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll ask Kathleen to ask you to put it in there.
All right. Commissioner Show?
Thank you, and thank you so much, Leah, for this presentation. I'm certainly very excited about, you know, having the additional funds out of this Parks Bond. Well before that, we were engaged on Pleasant City, which is almost a reality in front of us, Coleman Park, Gaines Park. And so many thank yous to you for getting creative on Gaines Park, to try to find resources to really make that community center what that community has been asking for and deserves for a very long time. Additional thanks on Curry Park, which is amazing, amazing turnout, really great community engagement. We're very excited for that. But I think what I want to point out, too, is beyond that, the kind of parks that are being addressed, the park needs that are being addressed beyond that. Fogelman Park, which I know Commissioners, a lot of you walked past on our peace walk in the west of Broadway neighborhoods, getting significant improvements there. And then going up and down that corridor, Osprey Park, Brian Chappelle. It's just so fantastic to have that kind of capital infusion. The one that I want to ask about was not a park when we did the Parks Bond. And that is the Pinewood Park Community Park. That when we initiated our peace walk, we were all standing in front of the Boys and Girls Club there. If we could continue to look at ways to, you know, take care of some of those clay tiles that are broken on the roof so we can avoid any kind of liability issues and making some improvements. I saw some activity there in the park of, you know, younger people coming out and really enjoying the park. And we want to continue that and really, as that neighborhood builds, make that the community center over there, too. So kudos to all of you. Thanks for so working hard to not only, you know, get this passed with our residents and get the buy-in from all of the community, but going the extra mile to apply for grant opportunities and really make sure that we're equitably distributing all of our dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Is grassy water officially part of our park system?
It, it is not. But it is considered, to me, our largest park.
But it's very important to us. It is. Okay, any, okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Thanks. I did forget to mention, thank you for bringing up the boundless playground. You know, every time it had been brought up in the past, I was really concentrating on the, on the children that would utilize the park. And recently, I was in a meeting where they were talking about the boundless park. And they brought to my attention how important it is for parents who might have physical limitations to be able to play with their kids on these parks. I think that's phenomenal that the city is undertaking that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, wonderful presentation, some exciting stuff happening.
It's a team.
Thanks to your team. Very excited, good news for our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please be patient with us. That's all I ask. We've got a lot that we're trying to get through. So thank you very much.
Okay. On mayor's matters, just one thing, Commissioners, and this is not something that I like doing, but you may or may not have heard, we had one of our officers taken down on Friday evening. One of our motorcycle car policemen was actually rear-ended on 95. Driver was going about 85, 90 miles an hour. And obviously knocked him off his motorcycle, tremendous road rash. He is alive, thank goodness. And it was a hit and run. The driver did not stop. So I went to visit him in the hospital in St. Mary's on Saturday morning. He was in reasonably good shape, but will take a while to recover. And, you know, it just brings home the reality that when these men and women leave their home to begin a shift, there's no guarantee that they will return home. And so it's not, again, I'm very pleased that he is alive. His wife was there and had a chance to spend some time with them. Further good news is, at the time, the police chief was there with me. They had narrowed it down to about eight cars through whatever technology our police use. And so, but by that afternoon, they did find the car in question and had questioned the suspect. And I don't know if an arrest has been made, but I know the investigation is ongoing. So I think they're pretty close to, hopefully, I don't want to jeopardize or jinx anything, but I think they're going to be pretty close to making an arrest on this. So again, thanks to our men and women in blue who go out there every day to protect our citizens. We truly appreciate your service. That is all I have. Anybody else have anything for the good of the body? Thank you, Commissioners, for your patience. This was a long one, but hopefully you found it to be informative and helpful, which was our plan. All right, everyone have a wonderful day and great week. Thank you. By the way, you're on.